Welcome to the April 23rd, 2024, 6:30 PM City Council Meeting. We do have a quorum, so I'll call this meeting to order. I think I did that backwards. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? And the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please read the rules to speak?
Yes, sir. Individuals wishing to speak on agenda items must complete a sign-up card prior to the item being introduced. Those wishing to speak on clause or judicial public hearings must complete a sign-up card and sign the oath. Sign-up and oath cards are available on the table. Individuals wishing to speak on non-agenda items may do so under petitions and requests from the public present. This opportunity is offered twice in the meeting, and individuals may speak at either the first or second petitions, but not both. No sign-up card is required. Citizens should not comment on any issue more than once during the meeting. All comments, except petitions or requests, must address the pending issue, and citizens will be given three minutes to speak on all items. Citizens wishing to speak on the consent agenda must submit a sign-up card identifying the items of interest. Each speaker shall be limited to three minutes to speak on the entire consent agenda. All sign-up cards and exhibits being submitted to City Council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much. We have no minutes to approve at this time. City Manager.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I have a few housekeeping items to bring before you. The first item is Agenda Item 9A. Staff would like to withdraw that. It's the Ordinance Number 8, 2024, Golden Knights Boulevard, and this is that staff's request.
Motion?
Motion to withdraw.
Second?
All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Removed.
The next item is the applicant for Agenda Item 9B, SSA Number 2-23 would like to withdraw this item.
Motion?
Move to withdraw the item.
Second?
Motion, second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Removed.
And the last item, I'd like to add to my City Manager's report, a request from the Transportation Planning Office for a letter of support.
Is that all? So we have up? All those in favor say, excuse me?
Motion. Motion.
I got two motions, so we'll go with the motion and the second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Added.
Onto Boards in Commission. We're on Item 6A, which is the Student Advisory Council Annual Report. The 2023-2024 Student Advisory Report will be presented.
Hi, folks. How are you?
Pretty good.
It's good to see you again, and you've done great all year, and this will be a great report, I am sure. Go ahead, and you can say your name and school for the record.
Hi, my name is Sidney Lely, and I am the freshman representing Astronaut High School. And on behalf of the 2023-2024 Student Advisory Council, we express our appreciation to Mayor Daniel E. Diesel, Vice Mayor Joe C. Robinson, and council members for their continued support and encouragement. We also express our appreciation to City Manager Scott Larisse, Astronaut High School Advisor Morgan Smith, Academic Community Enrichment Incorporated Advisor Julie Pringle, Titusville High School Advisor Kathleen Rios, City Staff Liaison Emily Campbell, and other city staff that provided our council with guidance in its decision-making process. Over the past year, our council undertook the planning of the following projects for the following term. First, we continued the Last Dance Prom video. Second, we hosted a beach cleanup at Playlinda Beach in November of 2023 with Canaveral National Shore. And third, we hosted the Student Leadership Seminar in March of 2024.
Thank you very much.
Hello, I'm Julia Moon, representing ACE. This is for the Last Dance Prom video that we've been doing. The Student Advisory Council has been planning and preparing a video to inform youth of the ramifications of drinking and driving for many years. After gathering a cast, we began filming some of the scenes. Sadly, our main actress was unable to continue the production. After this, the council had to switch around some characters in order to get the video filmed. We are now attempting to continue filming despite the setbacks. We would like to thank Senior Media Specialist Curtis Corin for his help in making this video and helping it move forward. Filming will continue throughout the summer for this project. We hope this video will have an impact on the students of Titusville. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Krista, and I'm the freshman representative of ACE. This year, we've hosted a beach cleanup at Playlinda Beach on November 18th, 2023. The Student Advisory Council organized and held a beach cleanup. The event was to develop, motivate, educate, and activate our community to reduce litter, recycle, beautify, and sustain our environment for the benefit of Titusville. The council advertised the cleanup at each of its respective schools to gather outside volunteers to help. We were also graciously provided breakfast items and snacks. While very chilly, the weather was otherwise quite all right, and the event was effective and ran smoothly. The Student Advisory Council and all others who attended had a great time cleaning up Playlinda Beach and learning what it means to help our community that is Titusville. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Callie. I'm the junior from Astronaut High School, and I was vice chairperson this year. On March 21st, 2024, the Student Advisory Council hosted our Youth Leadership Seminar at Parish Medical Center. We chose three speakers from the community, Jared Bales, Jonathan Gibson, and Ashley Skarthenberg, to meet and speak with the students from Titusville High School, Astronaut High School, and the Academic Community Enrichment Association, and talk with them about what leadership meant, how to show it, and how to use it to help their communities. Not only did these speakers meet with the students, but also Sustainability Planner Abigail Trout, who hosted the main activity where students got the chance to design their own city layouts. They were split into groups, and each group had a different environment or obstacle that they had to consider when constructing their city. She also discussed the history of planning and careers in planning. The seminar was a great opportunity for young leaders in our community to engage with each other and help them realize their potential in being a leader for their community, no matter what path they choose. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Edie Pringle. I'm co-chairperson of the Student Advisory Council, and I represent Academic Community Enrichment. To summarize, the Student Advisory Council has had an extremely successful year serving our city. In November, we were able to plan and facilitate a wonderful beach cleanup at Playlinda Beach with over 20 volunteers. We have made exceptional progress filming and producing the new Last Dance Prom video for our anti-drinking-and-driving campaign, Drink, Drive, Die. Last month, we also hosted our biannual Youth Leadership Seminar in partnership with Parish Medical Center. We had three professional guest speakers and workshop activities for local high school students to learn the important qualities of leadership. The Student Advisory Council expresses its gratitude towards City Council, the City of Titusville, and all its employees. We could not continue our service without your unwavering support. The Student Advisory Council voted earlier this spring on the goals we wanted next year's council to work towards. In collaboration with the National Park Service, the council will continue to hold its annual beach cleanup at Playlinda Beach this fall. We will continue to work on producing the Last Dance Prom video for our Drink, Drive, Die campaign project to spread awareness to teens about the consequences of driving under the influence. The council will also be holding a mock City Council event in the spring of 2025. The students will shadow their chosen city employee to prepare to take over that role at a mock City Council meeting. This opportunity encourages youth involvement in community affairs and career shadowing within politics and city service. As prescribed by City of Titusville Resolution Number 5-2023, the Student Advisory Council must discuss and prioritize two to four concerns or issues each year. For this reason, this year's Student Advisory Council suggests the following goals to be forwarded to the 2024-2025 Student Advisory Council for their consideration and implementation. Number one, continue to host a beach cleanup at Playlinda Beach. Number two, continue the Drink, Drive, Die campaign project with updating the 2008 The Last Dance Prom video. And number three, host a mock City Council meeting in the spring of 2025. Once again, we wish to thank everyone for their support during the 2023-2024 term. We wish next year's council much success.
Well, thank you very much. Let's give him a big hand. Don't leave. And I think everybody here can agree, once again, you present yourselves well, mature, professional, and you're going places very, very far, and I appreciate you. I have a few presentations here. I have two $750 scholarships and a $1,000 scholarship. You'll be able to hear me, but I'm going down there to do this.
Yeah, could we have Richie Dobbs, Edie Pringle, and Addison Flake come up?
Edie Pringle. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you did and all you do. And Addison Flake, thank you, Addison. Congratulations. And I'm assuming that Ricky Dobbs is not here to sign? Thank you.
Thank you.
City Manager?
Next item is Item 6C, which is the 2024-2025 Student Advisory Council Membership Appointments. Staff recommends that you confirm the proposed slate of students as members of the 2024-2025 Student Advisory Council as appointed by the prospective schools.
Okay. Any cards on that? Motion, please?
No.
Motion to confirm? Motion to confirm.
Second?
We have a motion to confirm the proposed slate of students for the Student Advisory Council as appointed by the respective schools. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? They're all reappointed. Thank you. City Manager?
Onto Item 6D, which is the North Boulevard Commission on Parks and Recs. And the North Boulevard Commission on Parks and Recs semi-annual report is in your packet. No action is required.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you, guys, again. Appreciate it. Have a great rest of your school year. Almost. All right, City Manager?
And last for Boards in Commission, the Titusville Environmental Commission requests for leave of absence. Titusville Environmental Commission Regular Member Michael Mijak has requested a leave of absence from the Titusville Environmental Commission meetings for the months of June, July, August, September, and October. And within your packet is an attached email from Mr. Mijak, and I believe he's present as well.
Mr. Mijak, anything you want to say?
Well, it looks like half of my board's here to tell you guys to send me along, so... I, of course, have enjoyed serving about 10 years, I guess, now, in the TEC.
Sure have.
And I've, I hope I brought a contribution or two to the team. I'm disappointed that I can't connect in using Zoom or meeting-type communications that we otherwise use every day in business, you know? And that I find troublesome, because I would be more than willing to connect from my fiber optic cable at my cabin in Maine, easily here. And in the 21st century, that's something that really we should be able to solve. But yes, I would like to continue on, and it's going to be your decision.
Absolutely. I think we're going to be just fine.
I'll be here for questions.
I don't think you're going to have any. Any cards on this?
Sir, we have several.
Well...
Tony Shifalo.
I'm sure they're cards of support, but rest assured, I can speak of support as well. Okay, Ms. Shifalo.
Shifalo, the historic Norwood House. I first met Mr. Mijak through the TEC and our mutual interest in saving, reclaiming, and preserving the Indian River Lagoon. And since that time, he has been so generous in the sharing of his knowledge, not just about the Indian River Lagoon, but a lot of the history of Titusville and the things that have gone on in the land development and crimes that have been committed against the ecology here. And I think that he has so much value to the city of Titusville and to the citizens that to not put him, not keep him on that board, the TEC, would be a shame. And I was here last year when y'all debated very closely whether you were going to let him have the leave of absence or not. And I would hate to see that happen again this year, because the knowledge that he brings about the soil types, the water and its nutrients or lack thereof or overabundance of is so valuable, and he's so willing to share with everybody. Keep him. He's a treasure, a resource.
Thank you. I have to say, Mr. Mijak, correct me if you're wrong. Correct me if you're wrong. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't recall any debate that I recall, and I don't suspect there'll be one tonight, just from my own perspective there. This will go quickly if we get done. Any other cards?
Yes, sir. Tom Perez.
Tom Perez, 3025 South Washington Avenue. Actually, I was going to say all the stuff that was just said, but I'd like to ask you to approve the TEC's regular member, Michael Mijak's request for a five-month leave of absence from the TEC months of June through October, as is stated on here. I also request that the city make the most of our valuable commissioners by facilitating their participation virtually in meetings when they are out of town or not able to physically be present. Make it possible for them to attend virtually. We don't have a deep bench, okay, on the TEC?
Good point.
And everybody counts. Everybody counts. Everybody brings in a piece, and especially Michael, you know, he's just been around too long.
I know.
So in this day and age, there is no reason to not allow virtual participation of commissioners and use all the available expertise they bring to bear on the important issues before the commission. Thank you.
Thank you. Gosh, I'll say, I've said it before. I've learned so much from Mike as well. We go out to the Enchanted Forest, and he puts out a lot of knowledge and a lot of passion and compassion. So that part's been my honor, and certainly I'll miss you. Might not go out there in the heat without you, but anyway, next card.
Katie Delaney.
I would like to echo the last two speakers from the TEC meetings that I've been able to watch. Mr. Mijak is a wealth of knowledge, and I think it would be a major detriment to the committee if he wasn't allowed to stay on it. And I would also like to echo, maybe the city could look towards letting him participate virtually, as well as, of course, I'm going to advocate for these meetings to be recorded, all of the meetings to be recorded. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Next card.
Kristen Lorti.
Bring that board.
Kristen Lorti, Provide Care Citizens Coalition. I won't repeat everything that has been just stated. I also support Mr. Mijak, and I was also a witness to what happened last year when it sounded somewhat precarious that his leave would be granted. So I wanted to make sure that I supported him this year. I would like to make sure that I, maybe even more precise than the Mr. Perez comment, about the use of remote technology and the Zoom technology for his attendance. Last year, this was brought up, and Mr. Perez brought this up, and the TEC approved this. From my recollection, the TEC approved it, and it never, I don't think it ever made it in front of you guys unless it was in this moment. But this is where, now we're going back to our, the TEC being thwarted, because this is now another year where this item hasn't come up. And I don't just want Mr. Mijak to be able to be on the TEC. That's not good enough. We want Mr. Mijak to be able to participate remotely. So that is the petition. And the TEC, on the meeting, just this April meeting that I personally recorded and have a copy of, the TEC voted unanimously for remote participation. But because their votes do not make it to you, I'm bringing it to your attention. There was unanimous vote. There was also the third unanimous vote for the TEC-recorded meetings, the third one, where I'm over two years now petitioning for all the TEC meetings to be recorded, and I'm not satisfied with five. So I know you guys can do better than this, and when Mr. Larisse brought it to your attention, he has never, ever brought the cost of just recording all of them and live-streaming them. I would like to know how much the Talking Points magazine costs the City of Titusville. We can't record our meetings. We can't allow remote participation, but we've got glossy magazines and videos. I'm not okay with that. Please not only support Mr. Mijak in being on the TEC, which should be a no-brainer, but support the TEC in remote meeting access and live-streaming all meetings. Please support the advisory boards in accordance with your Sustainability Action Plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
The last card is Stan Johnston.
Stan Johnston, I'm a registered professional engineer, and I'm supporting Mr. Mijak, but I want the public to listen to this, because something's going on. A big, serious thing that Mr. Mijak is exposed to and you guys are not exposed to. It's a big problem. In fact, that's what this is right here, that I have handed out to you. And what it is, is on January the 23rd, is that the TEC made a motion to go to council, a serious motion. And there were the advisory committee, Mr. Mijak's on that. He's putting up with this, and so is Mr. Perez. But unbelievable what happened is the staff, even though they accepted the motion at the meeting on January the 23rd, they never gave it to council, never gave it to council. And I asked again, went to TEC again, and I asked for it, for them to do it, and they said they would do it, and they didn't do it. I do not think the staff has the authority to take this away from you. And what that particular motion was is what I have written here. And this is not word-for-word what the motion was, but it says, "Is anyone in City Council going to acknowledge the sewage spill September through November 2022 coming out of Manhole Ponding and Greenwood Street and into nine city streets as witnessed by me, Laurlee Thompson, and others, the person who turned off the alarm and red flashing light at the lift station, photos, videotapes of sewage flowing out of manholes, many witnesses, and photographed on the front page of the floor today?" That was to go to you from TEC. Guess what happened? Staff said, "No, you're not going to hear about it." What did I say? Staff said, "No, you're not going to hear about it." Do they have that authority to block that? I asked them. I asked Mr. Parish that. "Oh, sure, we got the authority. We can do whatever we want to." Is that right? Is that right? Is that right? I don't think so. This is what Mr. Mijak has to put up with it, and he still wants to be, still wants to be on TEC. I want you to understand, this is a horrible situation we have in the city of Titusville, when a group that you have chosen to advise you of problems in the city, and they cannot advise you of problems. Do you think that's horrible? It's shameful. I'm asking you to do something about it. I'm asking you to keep Mr. Mijak.
Stan?
Thank you.
Anyone make a motion?
I'll make the motion, but I do want to say something. I was the one that brought it up last year, because my question to Mr. Mijak was, he's going to be gone half a year every year. Are we better off finding somebody who could be here all the time or not? And I talked to him about it yesterday, and he assured me that our alternates are always there, and so we're fine. So that was my question. It wasn't, "I don't like Mr. Mijak. I don't want him there," is, "Do we need to have somebody there on a full-time basis?" So I would like to move to approve the TEC Commission Regular Member Mike Mijak's request for a five-month leave of absence.
Second?
I have a motion and a second roll call vote.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Appreciate you. You know that, though. All right. We are to petitions or requests, take two. Petitions or requests. Mike, we'll see you again, right? I mean, you're not out of here. No, I'm not talking about now. I'm talking about you're not hitting the road.
No.
Okay, good. We'll get together.
Shifalo, Tropic Street. On Thursday, the Interior Department finalized a new rule that prioritizes the health of lands and waters the Interior Department oversees. That's about 245 million acres. The new rule calls for protection of the land, restoration of the places that have been harmed in the past, and a promise to make informed decisions about future use based on, and I quote... based on, and I quote, "science, data, and indigenous knowledge." It recognizes conservation as an essential component of public lands management on equal footing with other multiple uses of these lands. The Bureau of Land Management will now auction off leases not only for drilling, but also for conservation and restoration. How about that, Ms. Stokel? Earth Day was celebrated for the first time in 1970. Republican President Richard M. Nixon established it as America recognized a crisis that transcended partisanship and came together to fix it. He wrote, "The time has come when we can wait no longer to repair the damage already done and to establish new criteria to guide us in the future. The tasks that need doing require money, resolve, and ingenuity," he said, "and they are too big to be done by government alone." They call for fundamentally new philosophies of land, air, and water use, for stricter regulation, for expanded government action, and for greater citizen involvement. Imagine that. And for new programs that ensure that the government, industry, and individuals, all of us, are all called on to do their share and pay their share of the cost. Rachel Carson noted that "man's attitude towards nature today is critically important simply because we have now acquired a fateful power to alter and destroy nature. But man is a part of nature and his war against nature is inevitably a war against himself." End of quote. So I urge you, council, especially Member Cole, Member Nelson, and Member Stokel, I urge you to stop wasting taxpayer dollars suing the 82% of the voting citizens of Titusville who demand the right to clean water. Withdraw your appeal in the courts and spend the thousands of dollars that your legal fees are eating up on cleaning up the Indian River Lagoon. Stop suing the citizens.
Tom Perez, Titusville. Ongoing taxpayer-funded legal appeals have obstructed adoption of the right to clean water, citizens' referendum passed by 82% voters, and most recently continued the legal action with deciding votes cast by council members Sarah Stokel, Jolene Nelson, and Herman Cole. I would like to make the following citizen requests from council. Request that on April 30th, the council workshop at 5:00 PM be livestreamed and video-recorded. Request that the public get to speak at the beginning of the April 30th workshop, not just at the end, this occurred last year. Request that the public get five minutes instead of three minutes at the beginning of the workshop for those that attended, especially since the community conversation was canceled this year, to hear from the public before the council discussion. Request every TEC meeting be broadcast due to public interest and not every other meeting, as has been said before. Request that City Council insist that the city manager is accountable to the people's concerns and not just City Council members who award hefty salaries and give glowing reviews. Mr. Larisse's lack of consideration or adoption of numerous citizens' requests last year is not reflected in the city manager's 2023 glow and performance evaluation by council members and his two pay increases totaling $25,000. In summary, the residents of Titusville deserve more accountability and responsiveness than what is reflected in these actions. Please consider the reasonable workshop and broadcasting request to have resented. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
My name is Sarah Hodge and I live at 390 Sanders Lane, Merritt Island. I'd like to read a statement that was presented to you March 7th, 2023, on the Strategic Goals and Objectives Meeting. It is, it was presented by Thomas Perez. It is clear that the city must modernize its public records management system to provide that, what should be easy access to desired information. Our neighbor city of Cocoa has an excellent record management system that provides a ready example of what Titusville needs to make this happen. Cocoa and Brevard County have board materials online. The information is easily retrievable. You can find relevant information such as attachments of background information organized through the use of hyperlinks rather than the alternative of wrestling with an entire agenda package that may include hundreds of pages. Information retrieval functionality is needed, the ability to search onward content and other relevant indexing features such as citizen meeting comments and emails as is done in Cocoa and video content. Residents currently have to request the board packets from the clerk's office that sometimes can run over 750 pages. Sorry, I'm congested today. This is a burden for those that primarily use smartphones who do not have adequate storage or who do not wish to interact with city staff in order to become more informed. Steps need to be taken to include and engage citizens in the development of performance measures and two-way communication. Steps need to be taken to include citizen meeting statements and comments into meeting reports. The comments are valuable and they matter to everyone who does not hold themselves abet the fray to, of honest dialogue and debate to make for a better City of Titusville. Cocoa allows residents to email written comments that are included in the meeting minutes along with attachments. This helps residents feel more included in the city business. I have heard that in the past there was a concern over a virus threat. The virus threat appears to be disingenuous. Please contact the City of Cocoa to learn about their virus mitigation. Pro procedures for presentations. There have been repeated requests for TEC meetings to be video-recorded and broadcast every meeting. TEC voted on this request this past January. Yet the city's first goal of broadcasting, okay.
Just wrap up.
Okay. Meetings as assigned is being met 100% year-over-year for the past three years and the city awards itself a green rating. Citizens are concerned that our repeated requests and suggestions be included and updated in the annual performance measures and target list. Performance measures are what makes the plan actionable.
Thank you so much. Records. Lady. Next up, please. Hey, brother, how are you doing?
Good, how are you?
I'm good. Your name?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Andrew Landers.
And your address?
Okay, I'm here to represent, to see if we could possibly do something about things that are going on the street of Titusville where, between where Pizza Hut is on Hopkins and Harrison Street. It seems like for years they have done nothing about it to switch out the lights. I feel like every time I, I'm a full-time bicyclist, so every time I crosswalk on those lights, I feel like I'm gonna get hit.
Tell me about the crossing lights.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
So I feel scared every time that I cross those lights, any time with no light there, I feel like I'm gonna get hit or something like that. So I'm just, I just feel like I had to speak out about that.
Well, thank you for speaking out about it. I'm proud of you for doing so. And as we talked earlier, that would definitely be an F-dot, Florida Department of Transportation, but we can certainly bring it to their attention. And I'll probably go down there tomorrow and see Harrison and what?
Between Harrison and Hopkins, sir.
Oh, kind of take.
And it's just, it's all around town, too. All the lights need to be checked, too.
Okay.
So it's not just that area.
All right, buddy, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Hold on, hold on.
Yeah.
Go ahead, I got a couple of questions.
Can you just clarify the issue that you're having? Is, is the crosswalk coming on for you to walk safely, or bicycles safely across? Are cars still going even when they shouldn't? What, what is the issue that's happening?
Well, the thing is, though, at this point, you know, since the lights are not working, you're pretty much at that point where you have to make a judgment call, where you're having to go through the flow of traffic, where if it's going, if you're in the south end on Hopkins going towards the north end where the, the transit bus is.
Okay.
You're gonna have to end up, you know, going through the flow of traffic and you're gonna have to go through that crosswalk of either walking your bicycle or having to, you know, either ride across. But either way, the lights need to be fixed and.
For the crosswalk specifically?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
And it's all around Titusville itself. They all need to be checked, honestly.
Member Nelson.
So, so, if I could, Mr. Mayor, those are ours and they are being replaced.
Oh, good. Okay, so.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much. Motioning on that, thank you.
Are they timed off or they're not doing correctly? Or are we just getting?
We're replacing the, the poles and the overheads and the whole lighting system will be changed.
Hey, look what you did tonight. Good job.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you.
Can we get a timeframe?
Sure. The, the reason why they're out is there was underground damage that shorted out the entire pad for the intersection, but we awarded about a year and a half the replacement of two mast arm intersections. That being one of the, one of the mast arms is up now. I think the contract still has about 90 days left on it to be complete, so, so we can get it updated schedule and make sure, but that they'll be replaced with new pad poles, new pad detectors, everything. And if you wanna see the mast arms that aren't up, they're over on the property in between the post office and Bay Towers.
Ah, that's what those are. Okay.
And what about the, the sidewalks? Can we also possibly do something about that as well between, on Hopkins itself? Oh, sorry. And it's, it's all over Titusville where there's potholes and all that kind of, you know, things that are going around.
I know we talked about that in a most, more recent meeting. Kevin, you can give them the contractual update on those sidewalks, too.
Well, for sidewalk repair purposes, we can check that area out to patch up any issues with, with sidewalk issues.
Yes, please, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, brother. Appreciate you.
All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, everybody. Very much.
Good job. Proud of you. That was not easy. Next up.
Good evening.
Hi.
I'm Rhonda Stover. I live at 2485 Heritage Drive. I was here on the 9th. You have this packet in your box, whether you choose to read it or not. I was going to go ahead and read it for you. However, I would like to say that I spoke with Mr. Cook. He's agreed to come to my home tomorrow at 9:00 AM. However, if you'll please excuse me, Mr. Cook, after 20 years, I find little faith that anything will be done. We wanna know, what's the next excuse de jour? We've heard the easement excuse, the right-of-way excuse. What's next on deck for this property and this canal between our property and Wendover Oaks? In what world is this considered completed? This is the north side of that canal. Let everybody see it. In what world is that completed? It's not. Good job. Or this, at what world, in what world is this completed? This is not completed. This is disgraceful. I've been doing this for 20 years, 20 years. Somebody needs to fix this. I would like to also point out that there are seven FPL utility poles on the south end of many of our properties. If that wall fails due to the City of Titusville's dereliction of duty and willful neglect, those utility poles will become dangerous liabilities. Mr. Cook and Mr. Larisse, if we are incorrect, you would have provided proof. However, I have direct proof that this canal is under the direct jurisdiction of the City of Titusville and provided indisputable evidence of our claims. As requested in my email to Mr. Cook, if you have evidence that the north side of the canal is our responsibility, why can you not provide proof of such claims? My survey is recorded as Lot 7, Block 8, Country Club Heights, 4th Edition, Plaid Book 17, Page 87 of the public records of Brevard County, Florida. As Titusville city officials, you should have access to same information I provided you to, provided to you. This cannot wait two weeks, two months, or two years. You have the opportunity right now to end decades of willful neglect and dereliction of duty. Time is now to assign your resources, engineering and otherwise, to this potential disaster on your watch and make this whole per Florida law. I would like to know when this will take any type of priority because if you can do this at Parish Park, surely you have the funds to take care of our properties and the neglect and the damage caused by such neglect. If you can do this, you can fix that canal. I suggest that maybe we reallocate that money from this project and, and do something right for the citizens, for our homes and our properties. What is the excuse this time?
Kevin, you gotta come in at all. We won't drag this out back and forth. I can, I assume you guys have talked.
No, me and Mr. Stover are gonna meet in the morning. I'm gonna meet with the other neighbors and we can, we can bring back.
Tomorrow morning, 9 o'clock.
May I add that after 20 years, I'm sorry if I don't put any faith in that. I've been doing this for 20 years.
Well, we'll get an update on the next one. I'm assuming he'll be there. Next up.
Good evening. Megan Moscoso, DeMaret Drive. I'm also speaking to address the ongoing issues at Heritage Drive. I've, I received the same information packet as, from the neighbors of Heritage, Heritage, Heritage Drive as you have from the last City Council meeting. What is clear is that residents are seeking assistance. Despite their willingness to cover the cleanup costs themselves, they're encountering, they're encountering reluctance from companies unwilling to work on a canal not owned by the residents. In an email dated October 18th, 2023, Mark Langendorf noted that the city does not own the canal, considering it a public right-of-way. He mentioned that the city is content with the current water flow and sees no need for additional maintenance. However, he also acknowledged the city's ability to intervene if necessary. It is evident that intervention is necessary. Residents are understandably frustrated. They simply want the problem resolved. Whether it's engaging private companies or seeking assistance from the city, they're hitting roadblocks. Failure to maintain the canal poses risks, including potential wall collapses and property damage to the Heritage Drive residents. I urge us to explore unconventional solutions to support these residents, whether it involves the city stepping in for cleanup or granting permission to private companies. Action is needed. So I want to thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Well-stated.
So, may I?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Hold on one second. Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm assuming that, that the back of that property on the sides of that ditch is an easement, correct?
The easement is on our property, 10 feet to the line of our property. Anything over the wall is not ours.
There is no easement there.
There, there is an easement. Yes, there is. On our property.
Okay. So you are maintaining that easement?
Yes, we are, but we can't with it covered with brush and trees and broken wall.
Okay.
Now, how, it's impossible. We don't own it now. And neither anybody in the city can tell me. They say they don't own it. Well, who does? Because we don't.
Good point.
And Kevin said today that I couldn't fill that ditch in because I don't own it. So who does?
My thought, this is just my thought.
Hold on, we're not gonna have this debate that way.
Okay. Is the easement as yours, you're responsible for maintaining it?
On the east north side. Well, yes, ma'am.
So, I think you need to talk to Kevin. I think our responsibility is the ditch itself to keep it flowing, but the sides of the ditch, maybe not.
We're gonna end that discussion and Kevin, tomorrow after you get done, give us a report and so we'll go from there. I think there's gonna be something learned one way or the other.
Well, that vegetation in that picture is from the canal.
Got it. All right. Where was I? Next up.
Stelle, Coco, Florida. This is a positive bacteria test which serves as an indication that further certified testing for fecal coliform and E. coli numbers is necessary. The majority of people would not be at ease swimming in a pool with this type of result. This is a product of citizen science which is used across our county by nonprofit organizations similar to mine to aid in research setting national standards, obtain funding for clean water projects, educating elected officials, agencies, and communities. We use similar labs and testing methods as Save Our Indian River Lagoon Committee and its affiliated groups. A pollution report was submitted to the FDEP last year which forced, forced your city to start testing for E. coli. We didn't submit that report to the FDEP without having in-depth research and scientific testing. The city's testing confirmed that the E. coli in the area was high. in the area was high. Since you singled me out, Ms. Nelson, last meeting, I can't help but address you directly. You specifically mentioned my name and it seems your intention was to mislead the people of this city. The facts remain, no matter how hard you tried to discredit me. The fact is that there have been already five sewage bills this year. We are only a quarter of the way through the year and it's not even the peak of the season for the hot and rainy weather yet. The last testing the city did was October 2023. Geosim tech did testing as recent as February and it still shows you there's continued levels of fecal coliform and E. coli. The only MUC testing that was done was in a location separated from the area that was highlighted on the news. Additionally, there are sediments saturated with decades of toxic pollution coating the bottom of the water that was disturbed during the walkway construction. Muck buildup contributes to low oxygen levels, which has several negative effects, such as reducing water clarity, sea life mortality, and releasing harmful gases like methane and hydrogen sulfide. When disturbed, muck carries pollution into the water column, which can fuel the growth of harmful algal blooms. Many times, individuals may not immediately notice the health impacts of environmental exposures to things like harmful algal blooms. Chemicals can gradually accumulate in your body over the course of several years. Those especially living on the lagoon where decades of sewage has been dumped and toxic algal blooms have occurred can increase the risk of things like ALS and Parkinson's due to ongoing exposure to aeralized algal toxins. We know that the infrastructure is outdated and falling apart, and we also know that it's being worked on. We have recognized that and acknowledged it. But please don't risk someone else getting sick, injured, or worse, a child becoming paralyzed. We need an effort to stop that from happening. And you didn't want to alarm the citizens. Residents from across the city are standing together staring at that walkway in utter disgust. It is your job to ensure the safety of these citizens, not me. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I would like to respond.
Absolutely.
I would like to respond, Stella, if you don't mind. When I made those comments, it was not to say there are no problems in the city of Tyusville. We have problems. My statement was, we're getting somewhere. Let's keep going. And I think, Mayor, you said it. We're not there yet.
Nope.
But we're making some progress. Not enough. Not enough.
I would say.
And we don't need to stop. But I wasn't trying to call you out. I was just saying there is a reason.
You didn't call me out on anything. That's the thing. You slandered me.
So, I wasn't here, obviously. Let me just jump in here and say, Stella, several times you have, even tonight, a little bit, said some positive things, some positive things are going on.
I do try. I've highlighted them.
I have seen that. I have. You and I have met and I've learned things. Every time I get a drink of water at night, I think, oh, what's Stella saying? Don't do it. But anyway, that being said, you noted, well, we had that discussion because I do. I drink a big drink of water at night and every single time. So, just know I think of you. But that being said, you also said that this has been going, a decades problem.
Decades, yes.
Decades.
And I acknowledge that.
It's a nightmare to think what was going in there in the 50s and the 60s and 70s and on and on. But that being said, yeah, definitely, we want to keep working on it. I'm always happy to say that the Indian River Lagoon, they have sent sales tax, that group called the Indian River, Save Our Indian River Lagoon, they did a presentation in here last year and showed that we were number one. I didn't even know that, that we were number one in the county for completed projects with 11. And that includes the big water thing down there by the hospital. We're doing what we can do. There's got, there's so much more to do. I said yesterday, and I mean it, and I'm not, you know, I'm not that philosophical, but I, in this case, I am. We've only got one earth. We've only got one Indian River Lagoon. I get it. And I get your passion. And I truly think that, no, that Member Nelson gets it, too. So with that, again, thank you for.
Thank you.
That. Next up.
Guys, sorry about my voice.
Handshake.
Elizabeth Baker, Tyusville, Florida.
Your voice is.
It's really bad, right? I've been a volunteer of Fight for Zero since 2018. I've collected soil and water samples throughout this county for a PFAS study with the University of Florida in partnership with Fight for Zero. I've worked closely with Ms. Bailey, who has displayed nothing but integrity, honesty, and kindness to me. I have traveled to Washington, D.C. with her to meet with members of Congress. I was called to be a witness for her in court when an ex-employee of this city falsely accused her of attacking children. I wept with her on the sides of the shores of this Indian River as we watched hundreds of manatees die during the unusual mortality event that took place a few years ago. I understand that you guys are desperate to change some of the reputation of this city that is often referred to as Poopville by residents. And that is understandable. After a 7 million gallon sewage spill, a lawsuit from a kid being paralyzed, from your lack of warning to the public, the constant stench that residents are constantly citing, and suing citizens. They successfully passed a constitutional right to clean water. Ms. Nelson, your statements last meeting were not as dismissive as you think, as you're trying to pull off here. You addressed her directly and you said that she was devoid of facts. That is not true. You said also that you'd received a text from somebody saying that Holover Canal is clear and beautiful and as it was in the 70s. And that is so great to hear. I love that place. It's beautiful. But that is 12 miles away from the location and it's separated by land. Laura Lee also texted us when I reported hundreds of dead horseshoe crabs just across the river over at Gator Creek, directly across from where your bridge is that you're so proud of. I don't understand what happened there, why Ms. Thompson told us to unreport an FWC report, or why she told us that, you know, we might be causing a panic. But we're getting two different, we're getting two different stories from the same person. Because she's telling you it's beautiful. She's telling me to unreport things. That doesn't make any sense. What I do know is that this approach of look at Holover, look down there, at the inlet, look up there at Mosquito Lagoon, it's not working on the residents anymore. Maybe we should stop singling people out.
Thank you. Next up.
Christopher Childs, Shandale Avenue, Tyusville. I was gonna write something, but every time I write something, I just start, I just talk really fast. So hopefully I'll just, hopefully I'll be better. But I just wanted to say that I think you all know that you being elected is a sacred trust between you and the citizens. And I think that this, this platform that you have been given is lent to you by the voters and that saying things up there that might not be, that are not true is a violation of that trust. And I think it reflects poorly on Tyusville when those things are put out there and then there's a video on Facebook or something about, about something that someone said and that is, that is attacking someone who is doing so much for the community. And I know you guys do a lot for the community, too. And I, I, I hope that each one of you knows that we appreciate what you do and that I think when you speak up, we will be there to back you up. If you speak up about anyone saying anything against someone else that is not true, I think we all are here to back you up for standing up to that. And, and as far as this goes, too, is the Right to Clean Water Amendment, I think you, I'll reiterate that, is I think that you should withdraw the appeal on that and immediately adopt that. I know two of you already voted to do that and I hope the other three join in that and repeal that appeal and, and listen to the people and respect, respect that sacred trust that you have with the citizens. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Katie Delaney and I'm running for County Commission in District 1. And I'm here tonight.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, apparently we're not allowed to talk about that stuff.
Okay. Sorry about that.
You're fine. Thank you.
I, I'm here tonight because, as I've talked to residents in Tyusville, they're, they're frustrated. They're very frustrated. Because for a very long time, they've spoken up and they haven't been heard. I mean, we've all heard about the 4:00 a.m. meetings and this right to clean water thing is a perfect example. These people, they asked you guys for this to be put on the ballot. The board then refused. Then they did the hard work of getting 4,000 petitions signed. Then the council tried to stop them from putting that on the ballot. Then 82% of the people of Tyusville voted for the right to clean water. Then you all sued them for constitutionality. When a judge already said that it was constitutional, that's why they allowed it on the ballot. Then you appealed it again. And now you're appealing it again. The people are over it. We want you to start standing up to these people that are sitting in this room. You are here to be a voice for the people. You are not here to bow down to staff. You're supposed to be up there pushing back on them. You're supposed to be our voice. When I was standing there at the Earth Day, I had a headache the rest of the day because of the fumes there. Nobody's blaming you all for polluting. What we're saying is, just admit it. Admit it and fix it. That's all we're looking for. Just own the issues and fix it. And it's not just y'all. This is happening in the county. This is happening in other cities. We need public officials to actually stand up for the people and push back on staff. That's why you're there. We need you guys to step up because we're running out of time. People are gonna get sick. People are already getting sick. A kid got paralyzed. What else has to happen? Thank you.
Next up.
Kristen Marti, Coco resident. So I chose to come here tonight in particular to be in front of the Priorities Workshop that you all have scheduled for next week. So it's one week from now, 5:00 p.m., this room. It's not livestreamed. It's not, not publicized. You don't allow residents to speak at the beginning of it to hear our comments. So I have encouraged public comment today because we're now a week early. And if we have to do this every year because you don't, aren't willing to hear from the citizens, prior to your discussion, we'll just plan this every year. And I'd like to make a mention to Member Stockell that when the third appeal was, I watched the meeting with the third appeal and she said she could withdraw the appeal and we could just change this. She could, that could change at any time. Haven't seen it. The appeal is still going on. So, several people have already put forward things that matter to me, but I'm just gonna try to get through a few of them for your thoughts. There's a, I will be sending you a follow-up attachment. There's already an attachment in the Brevard Care Citizens Coalition, an 18-page attachment that has some of my, it has your actual performance measures for the city, the FY 2024 performance measures that are missing in your board packet. They're not even in your board packet. But I have them. They're posted online, so you can find them there. Because you guys don't talk about them. Last year, I wanted to talk about them. I had to talk about them at the end of the meeting while you were all wondering where the metrics were for the city. It was a little frustrating. But nonetheless, I want to go through a few points here, a few minutes. I don't speak as fast as one of the prior speakers, but we're gonna try. So this is the, you got the Tyusville talking points, glossy brochure here. I ran up some citizen talking points. So citizen talking points. Where's the two-way engagement? That's one of your strategic goals and objectives that Ms. Stockell also talks about. But I don't see it. I don't see it in the city manager's performance measures. I've made several suggestions. You guys don't even respond on your Facebook page to public comments. Where's the two-way engagement? I can't even talk to the city about your own strategic planning process. The city manager denied, the assistant city manager denied. Can't talk to anybody in the city about strategic planning, which I am personally interested in. Why aren't the city performance measures and targets online outside of my own Facebook group? Why can't you post those? City manager said that they're too confusing. Really, they're too confusing. For who? Why can't the Environmental Commission comment on environmental metrics? I personally put together a presentation. The TEC liked the idea. Guess what? Thwarted. Never made it to your desk for approval. Why can't your Environmental Commission comment and weigh in on the city manager's environmental measures or performance measures for the entire city, which you guys don't even know about? You have 68 this year, by the way. 68. Last year, it was 55. Next. Why aren't city records available online like other Brevard cities?
Hold up.
I didn't, I'm not done with the three minutes.
Hold up.
What happened?
Say what now?
I didn't get three minutes. I've been watching the clock. My time isn't, why did it beep?
Did we get three minutes? I was watching it go. So I'm gonna go and try to wrap it up in a minute.
I'll wrap it up quickly then. Okay. I'll just, I'll just literally read what I have here. I'll say, why aren't the city records available online like other Brevard cities? Why aren't important city meetings livestreamed? Meanwhile, in Tyusville, everything is grand. $25,000 annual city manager increases in 2023, $220,000 annual city manager salary, perfect evaluation scores from Mayor Diesel, Vice Mayor Robinson, and Member Cole. Perfect evaluation scores. Zero accountability to the public, $18,000 monthly city manager salary. Not a bad gig. And I'll be here next week recording the meeting myself because I don't believe that you will record it. But I would certainly like to hear differently. Thank you.
Thank you.
And please put the city records online.
Next up.
I thought I'd give you one parting shot before.
All right.
As you know, I'm a member of the Indian River Lagoon Roundtable, a group of scientists, environmentalists, lawyers, and others who are concerned about the synergy of nature and space. We don't want to overrun nature trying to get to space, basically. And I've talked to you a couple of times about things that have happened in the past, like the SpaceX hangar that went in that had a wastewater and industrial permit request of, I think it was like 1,600 gallons a month. You remember that discussion?
I did.
And I asked, what's the big deal, right? It's 18. I mean, they could have put in a two-inch piece of PVC pipe, but instead they put an 18-inch culvert. You may wonder why. Well, now I know why. You see, there's another environmental assessment for the building next door and they used the same EA that they did for the first one, except that next door is half on wetlands. And now the third building that SpaceX is putting up is going to be used for washing their rocket parts. You might have noticed that all those boosters that keep coming back, they're coated in black soot. It's because they're using RP-1, which is kerosene and oxygen. So it's a really nasty environmental byproduct when all of it doesn't burn. And this is what they're gonna be washing off. And now guess where that washwater is going to go? Right through building number two, outbuilding number one, into the same stormwater detention pond, except this time it's not chiller water. This is rocket washwater. This is like the contaminated site we have over there on 406 and Highway 3 that we've, where they were washing with tetraethylchloride and TEC and various other chemicals to wash the Apollo rockets. Well, we've got a contamination plume over there at Marin Island because of it. So now, here we have a company, and this seems to be Elon Musk's approach, is to nibble, 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 nibble. He's gonna start out with one EA where there's, it's old orange groves. It's not an environmental impact. The next one is partly wetlands and the next one is almost all wetlands. But they use the original EA and they just make an addendum. So it doesn't get advertised and it doesn't get approached. So you don't know that this is what's about to happen. And had we not followed those permits, we wouldn't have known. So when it comes to, I agree. So when it comes to... I agree with us getting out of the planning and zoning. I may need an extra minute. But we are going to have a real issue in the overall strategic plan because you don't control what the Space Force does. You don't control what NASA does. You have some input to what the county does, but you don't control that either. But let me tell you, the Space Force and the cruise terminal industry and the FAA, they all want the same plot of land. And they're all gonna be running hydrogen, methane, or kerosene, and we're gonna need fuel depots for all of that. And we don't have that either. So there are changes that are happening out here that we are going to be affected by. And we don't have a task force sharing that between NASA, the Space Force, the FAA, and our cruise terminals. And we're in the middle of it. And the resource that's going to be a problem is water because they need water for the launches. And they need potable water, not saltwater. And guess where that's coming from? The same reserve that we have here.
Wow.
So consider, we need to get a task force involved. We need to get the League of Cities involved. We need to get the whole county involved. Because what's gonna happen out here is gonna roll down on Titusville like a steamroller. We're gonna have an environmental impact. Like I said, I wanna save nature, but not destroy it on the way to space. We have to find a way to make this work. Because let me tell you, it's coming.
Thank you, Rella.
Thank you.
That's why you're so good. Who knows this stuff?
So it may be a good reason for Mike to stay on the TEC for a long time.
That's good stuff there. I mean, not good stuff, but you know what I mean. Good information. Next up.
Chuck Sheridan again. I'd like to just follow up a little bit on what he said. I moved here in 1962 from Fort Lauderdale. So I've lived here a long time. When we first moved here, the wildlife sanctuary was fresh water through the Gemini Mercury Apollo Space Shuttle. It's brackish water. Mosquito Lagoon compared to the Indian River Banana River is crystal clear. There's a half a million gallons of seawater that is used to suppress each launch. That water, when you heat it that hot, creates chlorine, bromine, a bunch of other chemicals, as well as a super saturated saltwater that, according to there, that I read the other day, the State Centers, one of the reports they have, it is drained into the wildlife sanctuary. So, you know, we wonder why the mosquito lagoons are clear. It's being chlorinated with bromine, and it has a higher salinity. It's working now, but when is it gonna, you know, hit that breaking point where the fish die? But...
Oh, yeah. Good point. Next up.
Hey, I got a quote by Ann Rand. You guys know that lady, right? She said this, she says, "We are fast approaching the stage of ultimate inversion where the government is free to do anything it pleases, while the citizens may act only by permission, which is the stage of the darkest period of human history, the stage of the rule by brute force." This is a constitutional republic.
Amen.
I think that the government officials are, let me say, the representatives have forgotten that. And maybe we need to be reminded at some point in time, right, of what we are. It used to be that they call you guys public servants. Now, there's five different words in the Greek language for servant, but each one of them means that you're a slave, that you're here to serve the people. And all across this great country of ours, the officials have lost sight of that fact, and they're more concerned about the public interests or the special interests than they are the interests of the people. I would pray that you today would resolve that you're gonna make it your choice to serve the people who put you here.
Yep.
They put you here. You represent them. They are the government, not these people who are unelected bureaucrats. These people are. That's a fact, according to our Constitution the last time I saw. And I hope you guys would act like it and keep these guys in check. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up. I think I gotta be running out, folks. Stan, you already went twice.
Stan Johnston. I've been five generations in my family been here, and I can't believe I got out. This is something I didn't show you just a few minutes ago, but you've seen this before. This is what went on, these red warning signs. This is what went on City Hall. I went to police station and County Courthouse and so forth, and a number of homes. This is about the sewage spill that I was talking to you about, that you all applauded about at the 5:30 meeting. And the city, what they do about this... Here's a picture that went into Florida Today, front page. And the city denies all this. It denies the sewage spill ever happened. Even though I had all these warning signs, I even took them and sent them to city council members and so forth, and the front page of the Florida Today and so forth. So the city's... And also, videos of it coming out of manholes. And the city denies it, denies the sewage spill at all. Furthermore, the city denies the sewage spill that was in December of 2020 that went on into 2021. They said it stopped December the 19th. And this is one of the signs that I put up at the spill on December 19th. This I put up on December the 22nd. The sewage is still going into the Indian River. And then, what is it? Back in several months later, the city says it never did. Not only that, on February the 18th, in other words, the city said this spill stopped December the 19th. I know Jolynn left because she don't wanna hear this. Especially, especially she don't wanna hear it because of this.
She might be on PPT.
But, but, but... But here's what's happened. On February the 18th, that's a long time after December the 19th, February the 18th, I got Jim Thomas, community advocate, go with me, over to Sandpoint Park, and we watched the sewage going from Sandpoint Park going to Space View Park and into the river on February the 18th. The city's put a report to FDEP saying... Saying what? It never happened. It never happened. But Jim Thomas saw it, so did a police officer, and so did Scott Devine and his crew, who are constructing a containment burn. They saw that sewage going into the river, yet the city denied it, officially denied it to FDEP. Shame on him. And this is the same sewage spill that the city, that this guy's got paralyzed. Same one. I want the police officer to listen to this. This is a big deal because the police are supposed to protect this also. And the police, what they did, they arrested me without telling me what I was doing when I was testing a sewage spill. Okay. I think you guys ought to do something about it.
Thank you, buddy.
Yeah.
All right. Next up. Tom, you? Tom's moving. That's it. All right, Consent Agenda, City Manager.
Okay, we're on Consent Agenda, which is Item 8 in your packet. City Council, do you have any questions of staff?
I see none.
City Council, would you like to pull any Consent Agenda items for further discussion?
I see none.
City Clerk, are there any cards for consent?
Yes, we have three cards.
Mayor, I'd like to read the titles for Consent Agenda for the record.
Please do.
Consent Agenda Item 8A, Approved Resolution Number 3, 2024, Commending Outstanding Students from North Brevard Area Schools. Consent Agenda Item 8B, Approved Highway Maintenance Agreement Resolution Number 4, 2024. Consent Agenda Item 8C, Approve the Area 3 Well Field Transformer Purchase. Consent Agenda Item 8D, Accept the Letter of Support for North Washington Avenue Small Area Plan, Project Proposal Being Submitted for the Community Planning Technical Assistance Grant, and Have the City Manager or His Designee Execute All Necessary Agreements and Documents Associated with the Program. Consent Agenda Item 8E, Approved Task Order for Lift Station Standards Updates. And Consent Agenda Item 8F, Approve the Task Order for Pavement Inspection and Assessments.
Councilmember Nelson.
I apologize. I did want to get some more information on Item D, if I could. What are we trying to get to?
Community planning, technical assistance grant.
I totally understand.
What do we... I guess what is it we're getting out of the grant?
Yep. What are we trying to get?
Something similar to the South Street Small Area Plan that the city completed several years ago. It's more of a land use recommendation plan. So we were hoping that, based on the changes that are happening in this area just north of the CRA, all the way up to Parish Road, which is our north boundary along that quarter, we'd like to see, maybe look at that area to see if we need to come up with some recommendations as far as what is it, compatible land uses, compatible zoning districts, and any other recommendations.
Okay, got it.
Thank you. Clerk, call the cards, please.
Stan Johnston on Items C, E, and F.
What was that?
That's me.
No, D, E, and F?
No, C, E, and F. C, E, and F, watch it. Dan, watch it. Okay, C, E, and F.
I got you, thank you.
Okay. C, E, and F.
Okay.
It's a long night.
It is a long night.
Okay, thank you for being here. And one of them has to do with the lift station standards, and another one has to do with well field transformer purchase and so forth. But the lift station standards update... Golly, here's a lift station right here, that same lift station right here that I talked to somebody about what was going on there. And I went over to the lift station during that sewage spill.
Lift stations.
And the alarm gone off, the alarm's going off, red light flashing and everything. So, oh my golly, so what happened? The lady next door, what she does, comes out, and she shut them things off. And she said, "Don't tell anybody." So now the... But here's what she also told me, and she said, "Don't tell anybody." The city of Titusville showed her how to shut those alarms off, and she did it. And the city of Titusville now says what? The alarms never went off, red lights never flashing. I saw them, she saw them. But the thing is, is when they keep going off and on and off and on and off and on during the night, and she can't get any sleep. I don't blame her. This is on Carroll Avenue, you know, that's where one of your sons lives. So I don't blame her for wanting to shut it off. But then when the city denies it, false deny, and I saw it, and she admits it to me, and she says, "Don't tell anybody," you know there's a problem. You know that sewage spill went right into the river? A massive sewage spill, two hurricanes, Aeon and, what's the other one? Something that starts with an N, I think it was, Nicole, I think it was. So anyhow, so I'm here is that I want this approved because I want you guys to watch what's going on, and maybe watch your own employees too, because they're not telling you the truth.
Are you saying all three that you're talking about?
No, this is about... I'm... You gotta write that C, E, and F.
Okay.
This one is E.
E, okay.
Okay, now, Dan, this one's an E, okay?
You haven't talked about C yet.
Lift station, on Carroll Avenue, okay? So I'm for this because, obviously, our water resources has a problem with what's going on and telling the truth about what's going on, and telling people to turn lift stations off and turn the alarms off and then say, "Oh, the alarms never went off." That lift station's working all the time. I'm not blaming Mr. Cook on this because he wasn't there.
All right, that's E, thank you.
So please do something.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Next card.
Tony Shifalo on Items D and F.
D is in dog.
D is in dog.
E is in...
D is in dog.
Okay, D is in dog.
F is in fail.
Okay, start us up.
Shifalo, Tropic Street, Community Planning Technical Assistance Grant. Funny you should ask, Ms. Nelson. I have come to elucidate a few things for you. I'm going to read from the grant announcement. I know your packets are so big, you probably didn't have time to really study this, but I did because I was curious, what is this small thing gonna be? So from the grant announcement from April 8th of Florida Commerce Press Release in your packet, "Funding to Create an Economic Development Strategy Through Innovative Planning and Public Engagement." Let me stress that, "Public Engagement. Large-scale effort to cultivate local economies and stimulate aggressive economic growth for small businesses." There's been a cry that small businesses are needed in Titusville, and it needs to be easier to get them open. Additionally, the program promotes innovative planning solutions to protect Florida's natural resources. Innovative planning solutions to protect Florida's natural resources. Keep these things in mind as we're going to go through this grant and this process. Now, I'm gonna quote from your city staff what they put in their grant summary. "The vision, goals, and strategies are intended to protect existing residential areas." Kind of like West Titusville, maybe? "And strategically locate commercial uses to appropriate areas." Maybe not concrete recycling plants out by the spaceport entry, you know? Tyco's gonna be a space launching place. More from the summary. "To create sustainable development patterns which are aesthetically pleasing and environmentally responsible." The environment again. Let's be responsible for our environment. So you've got to keep that in mind when you're making these planning decisions and zoning things. More from the vision, the grant summary. "The comprehensive plan calls for the protection and enhancement of existing neighborhoods, existing neighborhoods, and environmentally sensitive areas, and recommends that city policies and actions support these goals." Everything says, "Support protecting our environment, our natural resources." And yet, I come to meeting after meeting where the developers come up, and you grant them all that stuff to go cut down all the trees, tear up all the land. And on 8F, I just wanted to say pavement inspection? Who wrote this plan for these poor guys that are gonna go out in June, July, and August and inspect the pavement?
Good point.
June, July, and August, this is Florida, may I remind you?
Good catch, Tony. Good catch, Tony. Next one.
Last card is Kristin Lorti for Items A through F.
Good evening, Kristin Lorti. Appreciating the last commenter who brought attention to the Community Planning Technical Assistance Grant. I am an advocate of making the city business transparent and our county business transparent. And one of the things that I appreciate about your meeting is that the city manager does read the descriptions. I have found an even better example in Brevard County of the Cocoa Beach meeting, where they actually read the description. They read the dollar amount, and they read the little blur. And I think that is actually, makes the city business much more visible. So I'd like to share for the record that when I did a calculation of the dollars on this consent agenda, I came to about $208,000, which is kind of small given some of the consent agendas that we see that can go into the millions. But I would like to read some of the items that the city manager did not read for the benefit of the record. And so I'm gonna skip Item A and D because I felt like he covered those. And on Item B, the Highway Maintenance Agreement, it says to approve Resolution 4-2024 and the associated highway maintenance agreement authorizing the state of Florida, FDOT, and the city of Titusville to execute a memorandum of agreement between the city and FDOT for the maintenance of state road rights of way by the city and authorize the mayor to execute the agreement. On Item C, Area 3 Well Field Transformer Purchase, the detail says that this one is to approve the use of University of South Florida Electrical High and Low Voltage Contract 2022. Lots of numbers to purchase a refurbished transformer for the Area 3 well field in the amount of $27,885 to Electrical Engineering Enterprises of Tampa, Florida. Additionally, authorize the addition of Electrical Engineering Enterprises to the vendor of record listing. Skipping Item D and going on to Item E, Task Order Lift Station Standards. Approve the Task Order to ACOM Technical Services in the amount of $1... Approve the task order to ACOM Technical Services in the amount of $104,970 to review and update the city standards for lift stations and SCADA, and approve for the mayor to execute the task order. And the last one, on the pavement inspection, says approve work order number to ACOM Technical Services in the amount of $75,160 to provide a pavement inspection and assessment, and approve for the mayor to execute the task order. And I read those on behalf of the city, because I think cities should do them. Myself, I think you should initiate that on your own, that's a suggestion. But, in lieu of that, citizens can help to make these more visible. These are dollars that you're spending, they're decisions that you're making that are not visible to the public. And people are interested, people may be watching this video, and now they know more than they did before I spoke and before Ms. Shifalo spoke. So, I would request that the city manager and the city attorney do the entire thing, but I'm here to help out tonight, thank you.
Thank you for your assistance. Thank you, Kristen. Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
I take a motion on the consent agenda, member Nelson?
Move to approve consent agenda items A through F.
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda from member Nelson.
Second.
Got a second from member Cole, roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Consent agenda passed unanimously, city manager.
We are now on 9C, remember, A and B were both withdrawn. Small-scale comprehensive plan SSA, application number 3-2024, the Lieberman multifamily, and the city attorney will read the two ordinances for the record.
Prior to reading the titles, I'll go through the quasi judicial proceedings. During the public hearing portion of this meeting, anyone wishing to speak on a quasi judicial item must first sign a public hearing agenda card and sign the oath contained thereon. These cards are located on the table at the entrance to the chamber. If you have photographs, sketches, or documents that you desire for the city council to consider, they must be submitted into evidence and will be retained by the city. Please submit such exhibits to the city clerk. City clerk, of all persons wishing to speak before the city council signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, all individuals that have submitted a card to speak has signed the oath.
Staff and applicant, please ensure that witnesses that intend to speak have signed an oath card swearing to tell the truth, the full truth, and nothing but the truth. If there's anyone present who has not signed an oath card that does wish to speak on a quasi judicial item, please submit a card at this time. City clerk, have all agenda items been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
In the event that a council member has received an ex parte communication, either verbal or written, outside of this hearing, the council member shall disclose the identity of the person, group, or entity with whom the communication took place, and the subject of the communication, including all opinions or facts discussed. Any written communication must be disclosed and made a part of the record. Also, in the event that a member has conducted an investigation or site visit, or received any expert opinions regarding the quasi judicial item, said visit or opinion shall be disclosed. So at this time, if there's anything disclosed, it'd be appropriate?
Counsel, any, well, go ahead, vice mayor.
No, I was looking at this, and I, I understand it pretty well. It's basically, as it was discussed on last week, or last two weeks, is basically, is they want to not change very much other than the, the request to fill in and move the water from one place to the other. It's basically understood.
And with that, have you had any conversations, right? Any discussion with people concerning this that would affect your decision?
No.
Okay, member Nelson?
I spoke to a gentleman and his wife, his name's Tom, I cannot remember his last name, last Wednesday. Their concern was not directly related to this, but it's something we'll probably have to answer in the future. They live behind the wetland. And what they were saying to me is that the water already, if it's a good storm, they're flooding. If it's a hurricane, they're flooding. Their concern is, we have this project, and I guess we have another project proposed for Singleton and 405, and one across the street. And their concern is, all of that water flows toward a lake, which is next to their house. I did express to them, tonight's not the night to bring those problems up. They may be here later on, but tonight's not the night. But I wanted to tell you, so at least you're aware of it. And so, as you move forward, you might wanna think about that.
Member Cole, nothing?
Nothing.
And I'm nothing.
Okay. For the public, as was just described, this is small-scale comprehensive plan amendment number 3-2024, Lieberman multifamily. This will include two ordinances. Ordinance 10, which will be a comprehensive plan and land use change, and ordinance 11, which would be a zoning. And I will read the titles to both ordinances at this time. Ordinance 10, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending ordinance number 601988, which adopted the comprehensive plan of the city of Titusville by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designation on approximately 9.21 plus minus acres of property located east of South Street, South Route 405, and across from Swan Lake Drive, having Brevard County parcel ID numbers 223508002 and 22350800257, from the conservation low-density residential and high-density residential future land use designations to the conservation and high-density residential future land use designations, and providing for an effective date. Ordinance number 11, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending ordinance number 5, 1993 of the city of Titusville by amending the zoning map made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the open space and recreation OR, general use GU, and multifamily high-density residential R3 zoning districts to the open space and recreation OR and multifamily high-density residential R3 zoning districts on approximately 9.21 plus minus acres of property located east of South Street, South Route 405, and across from Swan Lake Drive, having Brevard County parcel ID numbers 223508002 and 22350800257, and providing for an effective date.
The Planning and Zoning Commission acting as the local planning agency recommended approval of the land use change as presented 5-2. One member was in opposition, because there's too many items not addressed. The Planning and Zoning Commission acting as the local planning agency recommended approval of the rezone change as presented 6-1. The applicant is requesting a small-scale comprehensive plan amendment with rezoning to correct the future land use map and the zoning designations on a property to reflect the submitted wetland survey and construct a multifamily development with up to 169 units using R3 zoning district development standards. The property lies east of the intersection of South Street, State Route 405, and Swan Lake Drive, generally in the vicinity of the entrance of Swan Lake Estates Residential Manufactured Home Park. Mr. Galendo is here to give you a presentation and answer questions that you may have on this one.
Yeah, in a nutshell, for everybody out there, because there's always a confusion about what we're approving, what we're not approving, what exactly are we going to approve tonight? If we approve anything tonight, what are we looking at tonight?
Yes, sir, thank you, mayor, and good evening, council members. So, what you'd be approving tonight is a change to the city's comprehensive plan future land use map, and a change to the rezoning map. And it would be based on the wetland survey that was provided. Our, the city's comprehensive plan states on, let me go to page 129, the staff's findings. Future land use element, let's see, Strategy 1.16.2 states that when the city receives a wetland delineation on specific sites, the delineation will be accepted by the city of Titusville, and the future land use map will be amended accordingly. So what we have currently is a guestimate of where the line is on, and that would be our existing future land use map. Back in the 80s, the city proposed, or adopted, the wetlands, National Wetlands Inventory Map across the city, applied this national scale of where wetlands are. And it wasn't ground truth data. So now we have ground truth data, and the comp plan says that we will amend our boundaries, correcting where the conservation future land use lies, based on this new data. So, on page 140 of your agenda packet, this is the summary of what would be changed. At the top of the property, there's, in yellow, two polygons that are shown as, that are currently in the low-density residential future land use category. And on the wetland survey, those were shown to be wetlands. So the applicant is requesting to change that from low-density residential to conservation, to be accurate with the wetland survey. The areas shown in green are currently zoned R3, which allows up to 15 dwelling units per acre. But according to the wetland survey, those are actually wetlands. And so the request would be to change that designation, to remove the development rights, or to change the designation, so they would no longer have the right to develop at 15 units per acre in those wetlands, and instead replace it with the GU and the conservation future land use, again, making it more consistent with the wetland survey. And then the areas in red would be changed from open space and recreation to the R3, which is our high-density residential. So, there's a net change here, where some portions of the property are going to have more density, because they are actually uplands, and some will have less density, because they were shown to be wetlands. What we're doing tonight is correcting the boundaries of where the wetlands lie, and accordingly adjusting the conservation future land use boundary.
Okay, counsel? No questions?
Mayor, if I could clarify for the public, this item C, as we said, has two ordinances. You will vote on each ordinance separately. However, when speakers speak, they'll be speaking to this item as one item. So when they have their three minutes to speak, it'd be appropriate to address your comments as to both ordinance 10 and 11.
Member Stokel?
Yep, thank you for that summary, Eddie. Can you just summarize too, because this is our second time having this applicant come forward with a change? Can you explain what the change is from last time to this time?
Yes, ma'am, so you're referring to the application back in November of last year, where the applicant had, instead of just requesting a change to the boundaries of the conservation future land use to map with, to accurately reflect where the wetland boundary is, to instead also, back in November, the application included a portion of the wetlands, which would have allowed for additional filling of wetlands. And so that application was denied by counsel, and the request tonight is just to correct the boundary of where the wetlands are. So, that's the, the, the change is, there was additional land area shown as wetlands on the wetland survey that would've had additional development rights.
Thank you, and then, just to follow up with that, on, thank you for the summary on page 140. So, just to clarify, like you said, a net change, so some of it is going from R3 to now OR, and then some of it's going the reverse, just based on now the ground truth thing?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Anything else?
Yes, sir.
Ed? All right, then we will call cards. All right?
We have the applicant.
Oh, applicant, yeah, forgot, I was thinking he was like the applicant. All right, yes, please, applicant, then cards, then applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. My name is Bruce Moye with MBV Engineering, representing the applicant, practice in Melbourne, Florida. We are changing, we're correcting a, what was done before, where the city would take old maps that were done, overall maps, and say, "Okay, the wetlands, we think are here. So this is where, and this is where the uplands are, and that's where we're gonna draw the zoning lines." We've gone in ground truth that, and now we know that that's not the case. Or, so we have high-density residential land use and wetlands. So we wanna correct that, we wanna take that out. So, we are only asking to change 1.42 acres to high-density residential, but we're changing almost eight acres into conservation. So it's a lot more going into conservation than there is going into high-density residential. So, it is a benefit for the conservation by over four times more conservation. So, your code and land use requires us to make this change, because it was incorrectly zoned and land used. So, we simply wanna get that corrected, so that we can move forward to the next step. We're not doing any engineering at this point in time, that'll come later. But we will comply with all kinds of drains, we, you know, by Florida statute, by Florida administrative code, by the city of Titusville code, by St. John's Water Management Code, we cannot negatively impact other properties for flooding. So, we would not do that.
Well, counsel, anything? No questions? Okay, thank you, I'll come and bring it back up at the end, call the cards, please.
The last card is Stan Johnston.
I think I'm the first card, right?
You're the first and last.
Okay, Stan Johnston, I'm supposed to save any conflict of interest? Well, I, I know the, Mr. Moya, and I used to work for his, his dad. And then I worked for him, and then I left, but it was on good grounds. But, I wanna say, it's Mr. Moya, he's a, he's a good engineer, and I've known him for some time, and I think he's gonna do the things right. And I've, I've looked at this presentation, and oftentimes, you know, I, I find problems that y'all don't like to hear. So I'm gonna tell you about all the problems I hear about this project. I haven't heard any. So, I'm, I think it's okay. And I believe he's gonna do good, because he's already done this project next to Park Haven Baptist Church, and he's done some other projects, and I feel like we wanna encourage Mr. Moya to work in this, in this, in Titusville, because he's, we need engineers to do some good, good work here. So, thank you.
Thank you, Stan.
Thank you, Mr. Moya.
Any other cards? Mr. Moya, if you wish, you can follow up. Good point. Counsel, member Nelson?
Move to approve ordinance number 10-20.
Okay, go ahead, sorry.
Don't mess this up. Go ahead.
2024, amending the code of ordinance, ordinances by amending ordinance number 60-1988, which adopted the comp plan for the city of Titusville by amending the future land use map by changing the land use designation from conservation low-density residential and high-density residential future land use designations to the conservation and high-density residential future land use designations.
We have a motion?
Second.
I have a second, a motion from member Nelson, a second from member Cole, roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Passed unanimously, thank you guys very much, city manager.
You got one more resolution.
Okay.
That's what I was gonna remind you of, that you have two votes, I apologize for the interruption.
Mr. Cole has offered to do the next one.
I move ordinance number 11, 2024, amending ordinance number 5-1993 of the city of Titusville. By amending the zoning map, made a part of said ordinance by reference by changing the open space and recreational general use and multifamily high-density residential zoning districts to the open space and recreation and multifamily high-density residential zoning districts on approximately 9.21 plus or minus acres of property located east of South Street and across from Swan Lake Drive, having Brevard County parcel IDs numbers 223508002 and 22350800257, and providing for an effective date.
Second.
You sure you got that right, member Cole?
No. You old people can't read that, Ben.
You wanna do it again?
No.
We got, we got them. On the second vote, we have a motion from member Cole, a second from member Nelson, roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes, passed unanimously, now city manager.
Onto ordinances, first reading, you have two tonight. Ordinance number 12-2024, repealing the code section number 1213, restrictions on parking recreational vehicles and other vehicles on public lands at certain times. This is the first reading of ordinance number 12-2024. The city attorney will read the ordinance for the record.
Ordinance number 12, 2024, an ordinance of the city of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter 12, miscellaneous offenses, by repealing section 1213, restrictions on parking recreational vehicles and other vehicles on public lands at certain times. Providing for incorporation into the code, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and an effective date.
Okay, counsel? Cards?
One card. Stan Johnston?
Pat, good job. Anything staff wants to add? This is the first reading. There will be no motion and no vote. City manager?
Onto item ten B, sorry. The ordinances number thirteen, twenty twenty-four, providing regulations for overnight parking in public spaces. This is the first reading for ordinance number thirteen, twenty twenty-four. The city attorney will read for the record.
Ordinance number thirteen, twenty twenty-four, an ordinance of the City of Titusville, Florida, amending the code of ordinances by amending chapter twenty, traffic and motor vehicles, section twenty fifty-eight G, to regulate overnight parking on public property, providing for incorporation into the code, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and an effective date. I just want to advise counsel, I've passed out copies of this ordinance that show a couple of changes from the ordinance that was in the package. There's slight changes to subsection two as drafted, where it says, no person shall park or leave unattended any motor vehicle. That now says, no motor vehicle shall be in any public park. On the third line down, the phrase during overnight hours has been amended to read from sunset to sunrise. So, rather than saying overnight hours, it specifies from sunset to sunrise.
All right, thank you. Counsel? No? Yes? No? All right, go ahead.
I know that this is in preparation for future things and we just, as we do this, I think it's a good thing as we move forward. We still have to find places, people to go.
I agree. Member Stokel?
Yep, just to reiterate that for the public, this is in response to recent legislation that has passed. So, I appreciate the proactiveness from staff. And to Vice Mayor's point, this has been a topic of discussion specifically with the League of Cities, especially with the nonprofits that show up at our League of Cities meetings that hopefully, I think our hope is that there will be partnerships that will be formed from this legislation that progress can be made.
All right, call cards?
Stan Johnston?
Stan Johnston. And I'm concerned about some things that are going on because sometimes police activity gets to be a little bit over ambitious. I mean, someone is tired and they, and they go to the side of the road and they park their car and they take a nap and then they're arrested. Someone else goes that and does the same thing and they get arrested. While I was in jail, one guy, what he did was he parked his car and he went to sleep and he was arrested and put in jail. And he's been in jail for I don't know how long. I think we're going crazy. Some of this is just going really crazy. The fact is, is my understanding is that, is that you park your car and, and let's suppose you fall asleep and you have a drink of beer or anything, something like that, and you could be arrested for drunk driving, even though you didn't, you took drinks after you stopped the car and you went to sleep.
Yeah.
And then you could charge the drunk driver. The guy who gave me his bed in jail, that's what happened to him.
Wow. Could be.
That's horrible. And he's so embarrassed. He can't, he's been in jail for I don't know how long and he's, he can't bring to himself to tell his girlfriend he's in jail. He's in a different state right now. So, I have some, what do you call it, some sympathy and I'm looking for you guys to have some grace and mercy in somehow awarding these things so that, like for example, I think he said from sunrise to sunset. Well, the thing is, is that if I'm in, if I'm in my car and I fall asleep for let's say four hours, because I have to, I have to get up and then go to the Cape at three o'clock in the morning or five o'clock in the morning, I don't want to be woken up and arrested and so forth like that. So, please have some consideration about what's going on in this world because it seems like sometimes the police don't have a lick of sense in what they're doing. That's what I've seen, just like, you know, I was arrested. I was arrested, wasn't even told what I was arrested for after working for the city all these years and so forth. Veteran and space currency.
All right, you're leaving the topic.
Okay, so anyhow, so do some consideration on this thing. Think about what's going on.
Got it. Thank you. Yep. Any other card?
One more card. Tony Shifflow?
Tony Shifflow.
Shifflow, Tropic Street. I spoke with several, I spoke with several people on city staff about this because I thought it was kind of a coincidence that this was coming up as the Supreme Court is addressing the, they're not calling it homeless. They're calling it the people without housing? Unhoused people? Anyway, I just wanted to point out that this kind of reminds me of the tiny house regulate ordinance that y'all passed, kind of shot yourself in the foot. You're going to allow tiny houses, but somebody's got to have a big enough property that they can have five of them and they got to be on blah, 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 blah. Don't overdo it. I want to echo Stan because the ordinance, it says in there, you can't be parked for more than two hours. Sometimes I go to the Aldi and I can spend two hours and I know that's not public property, that's a private parking lot. But it's very easy to get distracted sometimes and be parked longer than two hours. And I think that what we need to do is not allow the people to come and camp on the river from one launch today to the next one on Thursday, you know, because they're so frequent now. I understand that it, there needs to be some regulation, but don't over-regulate so that some poor slob that has driven up here from, has driven down from Atlanta to see a launch and gets here and the launch has been put off for a couple of hours, like they often do, and he's sitting there somewhere parked in public, napping in his car and gets arrested for being parked longer than two hours. I think you need to be very careful and not shoot ourselves in the foot when we make these ordinances that are trying to keep people in line. Don't, don't keep the line so that, you got my drift? I mean, I'm.
You know, there's some thoughts there.
Yeah, you have to be careful.
Mayor, I would just like to clarify that.
Yeah, please do.
The two hours is an existing code that only applies to trailers and mobile homes.
Is it only, see, it wasn't clear. I read.
That number, that's section one, which is not being changed. That's always in the code.
I know. I read through it and I looked up, I looked through the Mooney Court and it wasn't very easy to get to find. I kept putting in that chapter and verse.
The two hours is only to trailers and mobile homes parked on public land. So, if you're, that's the only two hours.
What if I, what if I had the trailer, what if I have my brother's trailer behind my pickup truck and I'm parked over there a little bit longer than, come on, don't arrest me.
Public land, not private property.
The street's public land, right? So, so on-street parking is a two-hour limit, right?
Just make sure you're in the street.
I know it's existing code, but you know, maybe we should look at that too.
Got you. Oh, perfect timing. Next card? Okay, that is a, yeah, that's a first reading. So, there's no motion, no vote. City manager?
Yes, sir, there's no old business. We're on item twelve A, which is the FY twenty twenty-four mid-year budget review and financial update. Through, City of Titusville code requires city manager to furnish an in-depth analysis of the budget and financial conditions of the city at the midpoint of each fiscal year. Through the midpoint of FY twenty-four, revenues continue to be on track consistently with the budget expectations, including the state shared revenues. Finance will continue to monitor closely and notify the city council if further adjustments are necessary. Terry Butler and team will provide you a presentation and staff is recommending that you approve the FY twenty twenty-four mid-year budgetary change request for general fund and general construction and roads and streets, enterprise and other funds and authorize one new FTE and approve the associated budget amendments. And Terry, here you go.
Mayor, counsel?
Thank you for being here.
Thank you, sir. This is your FY twenty-four mid-year budget update. We're going to go through, can we put the, there you go. Thank you. Just going to reiterate a couple of things about the city's vision. Titusvilles are growing in diverse community of hometown neighborhoods built among natural treasures fostering civic pride, family activities and community services. Of course, the missions, the mission statement through team, through teamwork and leadership, the City of Titusville provides essential services to improve the quality of life for our community. This is the strategic goals and objectives that you set last year. These will be addressed in the coming weeks, but I wanted to just show them so that you have a reference to them at this meeting tonight. We're here because of city ordinance code that says the city manager shall furnish an in-depth analysis, which you'll get tonight, and the budget for the mid-year point, which is March thirty-first, which has just passed. The finance department monitors fund level revenue and department level expenditure trends through September thirty. This is the mid-year review. The operating departments analyze line-out and budget appropriations and are responsible for managing their budgets to the bottom line. At this point, all funds are managed to the bottom line and within acceptable limits. FY twenty-four revenues, as of March thirty-first, revenues are on track. They will meet our estimated budgets and I do believe that they may even exceed. We're also continuing to closely monitor all revenues and believe we will meet the budgeted expectations. The current year revenue remains on track. I do believe we will exceed them. You'll see that in one of the coming slides. Departments are managing their expenses to the bottom line. Staff continues to improve services through organizational realignments. Continuous citywide improvement initiatives are progressing and the FY twenty-four budget will remain in balance after these amendments. For the general fund, you can see that there is an overall budget of fifty-five million two hundred twenty-six, or fifty-five million two hundred twenty-six thousand nine fifteen, of which we have received just over thirty-one million, which leaves us a budget right now of fifty-six point five, which means we're six point five percent over our estimated budget at mid-year. The expenditures for the general fund, same budget, received just over twenty-seven million five hundred six thousand, which means it's forty-nine point eight percent, which is right on target at mid-year. We're going to talk specifically a little bit about state shared revenues, which make up about eight point five percent of the general fund budget. These revenues lag two to three months. They're at thirty-eight percent. However, that is in line with all the revenues that we were seeing in the prior year. So, that is a targeted number for this time of the year. This is the proposed adjustments. The city council is requested to approve one new FTE for a laboratory technician in the water and sewer division. Also, you can see under general fund, there are several items here. I'm going to kind of summarize them for you. The first five items are related to public safety overtime benefits and also miscellaneous types of operating supplies and some capital items that come in at just under three hundred thousand dollars. There's one item in here for HR, for job fair recruitment materials. And then the last three items are for community development. They are also affordable housing, inclusionary zoning and linkage fee study, a special event permit process improvement and a zero, a vision zero plan. Those are at one hundred seventy thousand. Continuing on with the general fund, we have several items for impact fee study, the annex building plumbing and supply cost increase and supply cost increase for roads and streets. We have two items that are overtime for public works and then we have two items that are there for city council consideration. And I'm going to ask the city manager if you want to discuss those now or if you want to wait till later. Okay. So, those two items are included in this budget amendment, just to let you know. So, the total for the general fund then is seven hundred forty-six thousand three hundred sixty-seven dollars. We have also several other funds that need to have some mid-year adjustments. One of them is general construction. You can see it's five hundred fifty-five thousand two hundred and ninety-three dollars for city hall HVAC improvements and for the public works complex. There's two point nine miles of additional road resurfacing included that would be five hundred thousand dollars under the roads and streets fund. Stormwater utility is requesting seventy-two thousand dollars for overtime and cost supply increases. And then solid waste is asking for a hundred thirty-nine thousand dollars for overtime and supply cost increases. Under the water and sewer fund, these are mostly several items that are related to unanticipated cost increase along with additional testing that's needed. There is also in here a temporary training operational specialist contract for water reclamation. That's at sixty-one thousand dollars. And this does include the one-time FTE that is being requested at fifty percent of the year. That total for water and sewer is one million one thirty-four three fifty-six. This is the summary of all the funds together. You can see I've broken them down into the major fund requests and then smaller funds are just cumulative. The total request is three million one forty-seven zero sixteen. There is sufficient funds to cover all of these requests at this time and that, that's the total amount. We're going to move into expenditures a little bit. At the sixth month, of course, we're at fifty percent of the year. Based on the actual expenditures by fund, all departments continue to manage to the bottom line. All are within their FY twenty-four bottom line budget and they will still be balanced after this request for budget adjustments. As the city manager said, we're going to ask you to approve the mid-year budgetary change request for the general fund, general construction, roads and streets, enterprise and other funds. And we're going to also ask you to authorize the one new FTE for a laboratory technician of water and sewer.
And if I could, at this point, mayor and council will pause because the next few slides are all about FY twenty-five preparation. So, is there any discussion that you would like to have on the FY twenty-four mid-year adjustments to date?
I would ask, not a complicated or a deep question, but perhaps Kevin, looks like there's overtime in a lot of areas. Is, is that something due to hurricanes or is that something? Because, you know, you get a lot of different overtimes. You think, are we planning enough hours for things? You know what I'm saying? So, give me a quick summary on what the overtime looks like.
No, most of our overtime is attributed to open positions. So, the workload is extended to five days a week instead of four because we have vacancies in all divisions. So, so we have overtime overrun that will be offset in the future by some savings on open positions, but.
I am glad I asked.
And you'll, you'll find that in other departments as well. There's vacancies and we're peddling hard to fill them, but yes, sir.
It's not a unique problem for city and Walmart or anywhere else. They're just short on employees sometimes. Okay, thank you very much. Member Nelson?
I had talked last time about taking some of the ARPA money and allowing the Boys and Girls Club to use it. Specifically, my interest was the swimming program because I sort of felt like all the kids needed to know how to swim. Low-income, low socioeconomic kids, they need to know how to swim also. My question though is, we took the money from the ARPA funds, which were going to a youth enrichment program and we turned it into paving. So, I don't know.
Actually, ma'am, what we did is we moved it into a construction project. This is all general fund and mid-year adjustments.
Okay.
So, your ARPA funds, this has nothing to do with ARPA?
Right, right. So, we put this in there, but my question to counsel is, and I don't know if this makes a difference. It says for a swimming program, do we want to make it for a summer enrichment program? Does that make a difference?
This was your request and the dollar amount is, the dollar amount that you requested?
Right.
So, the dialogue that you should have is with city council, what do you want that to go to?
Right. I think that's what I'm trying to do. So, that's, that's my question. And Ms. Harvey is here so she can answer other questions. Most of the money that we spend for the swimming program is actually the transportation. It's not, we're doing the swimming program at YMCA. They're not charging a whole lot for kids, but the transportation to get them there and back. and back is costing. We are also turning around, and every year we take them to the dinosaur store, which is my favorite, to the Warbird Museum, to the Space Center, to the visitors' complex. Do we want to do it more as a summer enrichment program where we're covering those transportation costs?
Am I understanding that, that you want to name the designation for these dollars, the $10,000 that is, that is being allocated? You want to name them for a specific purpose?
Well, for, say, a summer enrichment program.
Yeah, what you named the program is fine.
Right, right.
Member Stokoe.
Mine's separate from that, so I don't know if, can I have my discussion now, or do we want to finish this one first?
Yeah, let me see where we, where we're going with this. So is this the time we're going to be shifting things around?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so I have some other.
And, Member Cole?
I just want to understand what you're saying. You want to change the nomenclature or the amount?
The nomenclature.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's easier.
Yeah. I, I just looked at it, and I sort of went, um, because they do allow it with the kids in terms of taking them out to the community. I know Ms. Thompson has offered to take 40 kids, 40 kids to the aquarium, which, you know, I'm not sure I want to be involved in that, but 40 kids is a lot. So it would be those kind of things.
Yeah. I'm okay with that. Member Stokoe.
Okay. So to clarify, the, I'm looking on page 188 of the packet, that list that we have. It looks like our anticipated revenues are higher, so we have an extra $3 million at this point. When we go through the budget process every year, we have that unfunded list. Are a lot of what's on this list from pooled from that unfunded list that we don't fund during our budget process?
Some of them are, yes. We reached out to departments and asked them to send us some of their unfunded priorities for this going into it, and some of that is included here.
Okay.
What we tried to do is have non-recurring. So that list, that $14 million of unfunded is non-recurring items.
Okay.
Overtime is a non-recurring item in this budget year.
Okay. And that's, I could think, leading into, as we're about to start the budget process again, I want us to pay careful attention, I think, to that unfunded list because I do appreciate us building our budget very conservatively. Obviously, I think my ideal would be to lower taxes as much as possible. Since we do have this excess, I think the things that I appreciate on here, and I, I think are top priority for me, are the public safety elements, especially as we're growing, for the safety of our citizens, and then the quality of life. I really appreciate the roads on here, the additional road paving. Again, I think as we're growing, I, I think we could all agree, I think, from our discussions before, infrastructure and water and sewer. Lagoon consistently is a top priority for us every time we do the budget. I mean, we saw it here today. It's a concern, both the lagoon and drinking water, anything that we can do for those improvements. That's kind of where my mind goes with our extra money. And then other things that I've been thinking is our corridors. I know we've talked about it, and then getting better signage. That's one I really would like to see us maybe invest in. I was over at 95 and Garden Street. I mean, and that whole corridor was just a bunch of trash, and I'm sure, there's other issues there, but if we have excess money, I would like to see some of our funds going to kind of beautifying our city. And then, I, I'm not sure if this would come out of our budget or how this would work out, but again, the ongoing issues I'm seeing in mostly the CRA with trash pickup and it being picked up more frequently, I don't know if that's a cost that we will take on if the tenants or the restaurants would pay more of that, but I'd like to see that get resolved.
So you remember you reviewed the CRA's prelim budget, and there's two additional FTEs being included in that.
Yes, okay. I just want to make sure those, when we're looking at this budget, where my priorities are, where I would like to see our funds go to.
Yeah. And to follow up on your question, too, about reoccurring, the reason why we broke out the one FTE, it's laboratory technician, has a separate item so that you can see that. That is a reoccurring. That's an employee that will be now employed, so it's a reoccurring expense.
Okay.
And, and Member Stokoe, I generally would agree. I think the word "infrastructure" is the most, one of the most important words. The other thing is decrease in taxes. I think we've done is all we can over the years to keep it tight, but if we have the opportunity to come up with a tax decrease, I think that's huge. But at the same time, I also realize we don't want to, you know, it's a balance between that decrease, or if we can get there, and services. And you just noted, I know it's the CRA part, but where we need increased trash pickup, we need to try to work on that. We are going to, I understand, pave more miles of road this year than in the past, and certainly the Indian River Lagoon and all that go with it, including infrastructure with a $9 million sewer project. That's a lot, but that's when we're sitting here trying to say we're going to do this, that, and the other. This, you got to be careful where we go with all that, but I think that's coming. Anybody else have a comment? Okay, so where are we sitting right now? We wanting to change what you, the nomenclature?
Yeah.
And that's it?
That's it.
How do we go about that?
I, I think the two additional areas for council's consideration are the Boys and Girls Club, which was listed as swimming, and I'm listening to what you're saying as the title. And then the second item for discussion would be the Police Hall of Fame.
Police Hall of Fame for $50,000.
That's right.
Yeah.
So do, do we put that in a motion, or how's that work, or need cards, or?
It's just, if, if you want to approve those as part of this, I, I want you to be aware that those are part of your mid-year adjustments.
Member Cole?
I was just going to piggyback on to what city manager said because I, I wanted to try to make sure the Police Hall of Fame got the $50,000 in for their construction.
Sir, that is in there. So if I understand you correctly, we're going to name, instead of doing it, the Boys and Girls Club Swimming, we're going to call it Summer Enrichment Program for Children. And then we're going to also, that is included, and the Police Hall of Fame Torch Event, that is also included at $50,000. That is part of this packet.
Thank you.
Yeah, and, and because this wasn't staff-initiated, this is, this council's recommendation, so that's why it's included as such. So if you want to go ahead and we'll finish the presentation and come back, take cards and take a vote.
Okay. And we've got the adjustment we needed to make on that.
All right. All right, so we're going to move into the '25 budget prep. It's well underway. We've got a lot going on. We have a new budget manager. It's Tammy Weiner. She's right behind me right here, so she's picking up some training tonight. The job, the object is to build a balanced budget. We try to keep, our budget has to stay balanced every minute of every day, and it's no different when we're building a new budget. As we put it together, we want to make sure that we follow your strategic plan. We will be following the new plan that you'll be putting together in the coming weeks when we build the budget, and we're also going to fund the city's operational needs. We're going to continue to look at the citywide culture and continuous process improving the use of Lean Six Sigma and the performance measurements that we have put together for you. We're also going to allocate resources to align to the fiscal year '25 strategic goals, as we mentioned, and those are directed by you. We're going to continue to pursue economic development opportunities through the use of, prudent use of ad valorem and other economic incentives, and we're going to invest in our committed employees' professional development by providing opportunities to participate in best practice training and opportunities. Part of the '25 budget build is also to continue to evaluate and just employ compensation and benefits to attract and retain a best-in-quality workforce. We're using a 3.0 cost of living percentage for this budget build. That is the directive from the city manager. We're going to continue to use, examine and use effective health insurance plans and policies to address the costs. I, I am told that there will be some increases in health this year. We're already getting those budget numbers together. We're going to use the five-year plan per, to prepare the 25-year operating budget. The city manager has given a directive of 8% for FY '25 and then 7% for the next four years out. So it's a, it's a long look, that, taking a look at operational costs, and it's quite effective when we put it together. We're going to adjust current staffing levels where there is an identified critical shortfall. We're going to focus on operating budgets on the near and midterm critical capital requirements, public safety enhancements. We're going to look at public outreach and infrastructure improvement projects, including roads, utilities, IT, and public facilities. We're going to maintain the General Fund emergency and stabilization reserves at the legally required limits. We're going to continue to address liabilities and debt by funding OPEB, and we're also going to encourage managed growth by using low-impact development principles as a mean of developing an attractive build environment while protecting and conserving our natural Okay, so that's, I'm, I'm behind on the slide. So that's what we are for up to the what's next. You can see the calendar that we have up there. We're all set. Of course, we have the meeting next week for the strategic goals that will be coming up. And if you have any questions about any of this, then you can let me know. Otherwise, it's, it's open for you guys.
Well presented, easy to understand, which isn't always the case. Easy to understand. Couple little changes. Counsel, anything else you want to add at this point? How many cards do we have?
We have one card.
Okay, um, okay, call the card.
We have two cards.
Okay.
Stan Johnston, I have an interest in this. I, I certainly would like this, the kids to get training for swimming. There's just too many drownings. I'm a swimmer, and I found that the state of Florida is backward compared to up north where I'm, where I'm from. I mean, we had swimming pools up there, and then when I came down here, we didn't have a YMCA. We didn't have anything in a big city like this. It's incredible. So I'm, I, this, the, the, in far as I'm concerned, and the PE programs in the high schools are backward compared to what I'm from up, up north.
True.
A bunch of kids don't even have to dress out. They don't even have to dress out. They don't have to participate. I never heard of such a thing. But anyhow, that's, that's one thing I'm, I'm for. I don't know how y'all are going to do the other things I'm asking for as far, as far as the training of our kids. But I'm looking at this $130,000 overtime shortfall for related benefits, police, and also the fire. We've got, how many police officers here? Anyone count them? There's one, two, three, four, one out on the highway, five, and I'm not sure of the guy in the blue shirt. But how many police officers do we need to have a council meeting? Sometimes, you know, when, when I've been taken out in the hall, I've got, I've got five police officers taking me out in the hallway. And I've been told by, by a police officer, says, "We're here because of you, Stan Johnston, but you're such a threat that we have to have all these police officers here. I'd like y'all to save some money." I don't know, maybe you can save some money. Maybe you can shoot me. That, that would save a lot of money.
Stop.
It would.
Don't do it.
But the thing is, is right now, is I'm, I'm, I'm having so much harassment and so many other people by the Titusville Police Department. You could save a lot of money by, they don't have to be doing that. I'm not doing anything, problem. You don't have to have all these police officers here. I don't even know why two firemen are here either. So this, this is a big deal. $130,000 for the police, in other words, overtime shortfall for the police. I think the city manager, he's got, he's got really entitled with some people, the police officers, making sure they're making good money. That's what I hear. That's the scuttlebutt I hear. I don't think it's right. So let's, let's try to save some money and, uh, not, for example, he didn't have to raise his, his feet to $225,000 either. So some of this I like, some of it I don't, but you can, you can do some savings and budget. This is almost like hiding costs when you come, come mid-year and you put this stuff in. It didn't come in the, in the budget. It's these addendum to the budget. Addendum to the budget, how much? $3 million? Woo! Thank you.
Thank you, Stan. Next card.
Kristen Lorti.
Hi, Kristen Lorti, Koko resident. So when I got the budget pocket for this meeting, it was only at 239 pages. I thought, wow, that is a skinny pocket for Titusville. And so as I was listening to this agenda item, seeing the presentation delivered, I said, I don't know if that presentation is in that agenda packet. Guess what? It's not there. There is one single page. It's page, what is, page, one single page in the agenda packet for item 12A. And item 12A is fiscal year 2024 mid-year budget review, but you're also already getting a jumpstart on FY 2025 budget preparation. There's one single sheet, and it's a slide with the numbers in it that's actually in the packet. I just find that disingenuous. I don't understand why the budget materials aren't in the budget packet. I think the public should have been made available those materials. So I, I can request them after the fact, but now you're taking votes. You have the workshop coming next week. You're already spending money on FY 2025, and some people might have wanted to understand your priorities before taking a vote to know how they feel about the vote that you're about to take. So I just find this very surprising, and I'm quite disappointed that this is how you're going about the budget, the mid-year budget review and not including all the materials for the benefit of the public. And then also this advance approval for FY 2025 when your actual discussion is scheduled, not for a week from now. So I object to that, and that's all I'll say. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristen. Standing with a hand. Member Stokoe.
Yep. Just to clarify, we are just approving the mid-year budget. We're not doing anything with 2025 tonight.
That's correct. We just put 2025 in there for your understanding. And we presented that, those items to you in January, so it's a review of the items. I did make an adjustment to the COLA based on the economic environment.
That's what I, yeah, we said suggesting thing based on what the actual cost has been up to this particular.
Yeah, this is not a budget hearing.
Yeah. And then before we do that vote, speaking of 2025, I did receive a list of state appropriations. They still could potentially be vetoed, but as we're looking into our next budget cycle, I do want to request that we apply for state appropriations. There were seven cities within Brevard County plus Brevard County that received state appropriations. So when we're talking about trying to reduce taxes, if we're able to get a state appropriation or at least apply, apply for one, that may help us to be able to do that. So that would be my request.
Member Nelson?
So along those lines, we didn't get the appropriation for Scobee Park to demuck it, but it would be wonderful if we could do some appropriations or request for appropriations for some of the demucking.
Right.
Scobee Park and that area between the parks, which I guarantee has muck in it.
Oh.
Yeah.
Definitely. I'm sure.
So that would be my request.
Any other comments, counsel? All right, we want to make a motion on that?
Approve the FY 2024 mid-year budgetary change request for the General Fund, general construction, and Roads and Streets, enterprise, and other funds. Authorize one new FTE and approve the associated budget amendments with the change in the nomenclature.
Second.
Motion from Member Nelson, second, Member Cole, roll call vote.
Member Stokoe?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Passed unanimously, and at this moment, we're, I don't know if I'm saving any of you guys, but we're taking a five-minute break. I gotta go. I gotta go. you guys, but we're taking a five-minute break. I gotta go. I gotta go. Reconvene for the last couple issues here. Stan, are you ready?
Ready.
All right.
Okay.
Meeting back in order. City Manager.
Onto item 12B, which is code enforcement lien reduction request on the property located at 1700 Chaucer Road.
What about 12A? We just did that.
You just talked about that.
I'm, I've got a card.
You spoke.
Oh, you're right.
Stan, remember when you said it's getting late?
You better go, Stan.
Come on, Stan. All right. Reset. City Manager.
So the code enforcement lien reduction request on property located at 1700 Chaucer Road. You have the summary and explanation on the background. I'm not going to read all of that. It appeared before the special magistrate. The special magistrate approved the recommendation from, for code enforcement lien reduction of a daily fine of the, from the amount of $75,925 to $30,000 plus cost payable to the city of Titusville within 90 days. This is for the property located as, as previously stated. Glenn's here. Mr. Tolleson, our code enforcement managers here to answer questions that you may have on the code reduction approval or not.
First thing I'll say when I saw this, and we don't see many of these, is that I thought it fair-minded to reduce these fines. In full disclosure, at least a couple of these houses, one's across the street from me and one's down the street. So, you know, I understand the situation on both sides, but I appreciate it looks like there was perhaps some kind of compromise and trying to come to a win-win to some degree. So that's my first thought on that. Counsel, anything else? I, I see nothing. Glenn, anything you want to say?
No, sir. The applicant is, or our applicant is here this evening. Just like to thank them for the work they've done on this property. And it was, it was a, spent a lot of time on this property, and, and he's here and.
I appreciate that.
Moving forward with that property.
You guys want to say anything? That's more, you're more than welcome.
And we're on item B right now, which is 1700 Chaucer Road.
Okay. Chaucer people, if you wish to. You certainly may. I don't know who they are, but I don't see them. Okay. All right. I guess if we say if there's any cards, that would be the cards. Any cards on this?
Yes, sir. Stan Johnston.
Stan?
Yeah.
Stan, you're.
Thank you, Mr. Tolleson. This is a difficult situation. At least I see it as a difficult situation. Because I've been, I've been to a few of these meetings, and it's a great surprise to me, you know, 75,000, or about 76,000 reduced to 30,000. And I don't know what to say, but I actually am more surprised by the, the agenda item right before that. We had over $3 million for a mid-year budget review. That's a lot of money. So I'm going to, I, I think in terms of cruel and unusual punishments. And when I came to Florida in 1952, I believe it was 1952, is that, is that they had a sign on the road. It said $500 fine for littering. We still got those signs out now. $500 fine for littering. And I think that's, no, it says minimum fine. And I think that's cruel and unusual punishment. I think we ought to get rid of cruel and unusual punishment. And this, this, sometimes this, what Glenn is working with is, is what I consider to be cruel and unusual punishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other cards?
Yes, sir.
Motion. Member Nelson.
Move to approve this special magistrate recommendation for code enforcement lien reduction for 1700 Chaucer Road.
Second.
Motion, Member Nelson, second Member Cole, roll call vote.
Member Cole.
Yes.
Member Nelson.
Yes.
Mayor Diesel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson.
Yes.
Member Stokoe.
Yes.
Passed unanimously. City Manager.
Onto item 12C, which is code enforcement lien reduction request for property located at 945 Plenero Road. The special magistrate met and recommended for a code enforcement lien reduction of the daily fine of amount from $25,850 to $2,000 plus cost payable to the city of Titusville within 90 days. This is for the property located at 945 Plenero Road.
Palermo.
Plenero.
Palermo. Thank you very much. Glenn, anything you want to say?
No, sir. The applicant is here, and, and they have placed a card.
Okay. Yeah, call the card, please.
Hello, Rosa.
Howdy. How are you?
Hello, good.
Good to see you.
Yeah, you too. You know Palermo.
Yeah, I know Palermo.
I know you do. Okay. As you know, the special magistrate did give me a reduction in my request. I wanted to let you know a little bit of the circumstances. I'll make it quick. It's been a long day. I know we're all tired. So I'll just kind of get to the, the facts. I actually thought I hired a licensed contractor at this time. I was not in town. My father was very ill. I was taking care of him for a few months, so I had my sister at my house during this time. But anyway, he did present himself as a licensed contractor, wrote it down, made me believe it. And I wanted you to personally know, I don't know if you know this specifically, but there is a Realtor that you may know that lives in the neighborhood, and I won't name her, just out of respect. She recommended him to me. He also did her, and I trusted him. The fact is, is that he wasn't, and this was in September of 2022, just before the October hurricanes. The May Wright, which is the city's own, city, it's code enforcement, actually found them on, on the roofs on Palermo at the time. And like I said, I was not home, but she told them, well, she asked them for a license. And he said, oh, no, no, you got to remember, these are my rental homes. I had him do two rental homes and my home, my homestead, at the same time, just before the hurricanes. All three homes were leaking, and all three homes needed it before the hurricane hit. So they jump off the roof, according to her, and, you know, run like, oh, my gosh, you know. Then they continued to do the work, okay? They finished the homes. They finished all three. And now I don't have a permit on my homestead at the time either, because I assume he's pulling them for all. When the work is done, I get a call from him. Actually, I get a call from my tenant, Robbie, that you know, that's across the street, that says, you've got a notice on your door that you need to contact code enforcement. So, you know, here I find out at this time that this guy's not licensed. And I find out I can't pull the permits from my rental homes. I didn't know that either. So I was stuck. I pulled the permit on my homestead. I got that one approved when I got back in town. Passed, no problem. I spent the next year and a half, actually, I'll tell you this, I spent a year and I found a, let me just finish up real quick.
Go ahead, you finish up.
May Wright recommended, which is also code enforcement, for me to try to get a structural engineer, because no roofer would pull this permit for me. They wanted no responsibility for the, the homes or the work. So it was impossible. And I have a list of contractors that I tried to get to do this for me, and no one would, no one would do it. So anyway, I thought, okay, a structural engineer will do it. Why not? You know, they're like, they do everything on a building. I did find one in July 5th of 2023. His name was John Grant. He was referred from Gordon MK, MK Construction. He was willing to do it. I called the building official, Steve Adams. He didn't, he denied it. So if I would have been able to use a structural engineer, I would have never even had to go in front of the magistrate to start accumulating these fines on July 21st. So from July 21st of 2023 till March, April, I think April of this year, I was getting fined $50 a day for each home until I finally found a contractor that would pull my permits for me. He pulled them. They passed. I became in compliance. I'm asking for a full reduction. I was in no harm to the public. I was protecting my homes. I was protecting my tenants. And I know I have hard costs, and I don't have a problem with that. But I'll leave it in your hands. I just wanted you to know the truth and what I went through, and it was very, very hard. I also kept in contact with Chelsea Farrell all the way through this ordeal, and she actually gave me some respect and, and told the, the special magistrate that I did, and she appreciated that. So I did all of my due diligence the best I could. And that's what I'm asking for, and I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions specifically for her at this time? Okay, go ahead and sit down. Let's see what we have up here.
Am I done here?
Yeah, please. Thank you. Counsel, anything you guys want to add or see or comment on? Member Stokoe?
Yep. I just wanted to see if Glenn had any follow-up.
I was going to go to him, too.
Yeah, to that story or anything to share along those lines of, of what she just shared with us.
Ms. Russo was correct. She tried, and I don't know the total number, but she worked with us through the process, and there, not a roofing company would take on the roof because they didn't install it. She did contact a structural engineer, and she was told that she couldn't have the permit, that a roofing company had to pull it. So that led to that hearing. And at the time, didn't have the permit, so it was found to be in violation. And she finally got the roofing company to do it, and we took it straight back to the magistrate, who reduced it to the $2,000.
So the, a total amount that it originally was, the 25, is that from $50 a day? For how long this went on for?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. That was the running fine, $50.
Okay. And during that time, she was actively trying to?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah, that's.
It sounds to me, the word she used fits. She was doing her due diligence.
Yeah.
Greg, as I heard, it sounds to me like you would agree.
Yes, sir.
But, and I'm not trying to put it on you, but you were closer to the situation than we were. You seemed to collaborate that her, her efforts that she told us are exactly what happened.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I, I think some due diligence has been done, and it sounds like she got kind of caught up in a ripoff. Member Stokoe.
Yep. Just, do we know why the magistrate went down to 2,000 and did not just go down to zero? Was there any reasoning or?
That's a good question.
She didn't provide other, any reason other than what, when she went through the list and compared it again. This is a new process for, for y'all to hear.
Right. That's.
Yeah, we don't do this often.
She didn't give any reason why that particular number.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. And I, I think that's where I'm going, because as the mayor said, that we don't normally see these. And I think our intent is not to collect fees, but it's to really make sure all of our properties are up to code. Like, that is our intent and goal.
Yes, ma'am. Our number one goal is to achieve.
And so if fines need to be there, they need to be there. But if somebody's actively working on something and now it's fixed, that's where I have a hard time saying, well, yeah, that's.
I can just tell you, because I was, I live across the street from one of the homes, it just looked like somebody putting a roof on like they put a roof on. And I never would have known. And I didn't know until apparently there was a notice on the front door. So, you know, I think that certainly, from my view, et cetera, it looked like due diligence was done. And it does look like the magistrate was trying to put it that way. I mean, that's quite a reduction. I was kind of impressed with that, but perhaps there's even more to this. While I say that, I do want to say, and I have already addressed this with city attorney, but I want to do it in public, and that is that city attorney, as I said, since I live across the street from one of the homes, around the block basically from another one, and I, I know the young lady in question from living in the neighborhood, I want to make sure that I am okay to continue on in this procedure.
You would need to abstain if there's a conflict of interest, which would be if this would result in any kind of gain or loss special to you. And of course, you can analyze that. I'm not sure how.
There's no gain or loss.
A fine reduction on the property.
No, no gain or loss. Won't even joke about that. No gain or loss. I just, again, it's very rare that I'm familiar with this situation.
The other thing I would point out is there's a difference between fines and cost. So you, you're taking action on the fine, but there is also hard costs that the city would seek to recover that they put out in the case of $197. So when you look, I believe it's 198, 97?
Yes, it should be noted that Ms. Russo had already tried to pay those costs, and we wouldn't allow her to.
Wow.
So if you're looking at the fine, I'd also remember there are hard costs that would, the city would seek to recover. So if you're looking at the fine, I'd also remember there are hard costs that would, the city would seek to recover.
Member Nelson?
I agree with Member Stokel. I believe Ms. Russo did everything she could. And I would suggest that we do zero fine and she pays the cost.
Is that a motion?
Make a motion.
That can be a motion.
We have a card.
But I will say, she has the other house, too, and so my suggestion would hold for both houses.
Okay, a card.
Stan Johnston.
I'm inclined to agree with Ms. Stokel and Jo Lynn and Coach Diesel. And I think, I don't think Glenn is against it.
Oh, he was with it.
So I don't, I think y'all want me to shut up. Okay, I'm going to anyway.
I'll tell you later.
What do you want it on?
All right, brother. Got you. Thank you. So, Member Nelson?
That is a motion.
I'll second.
That was a motion.
I hate to do this, but can you kind of just say that again, so I know exactly where we're at?
So my motion would be that we charge Ms. Russo the cost and zero fine.
Second.
I got a motion for the cost and zero fine by Member Nelson, right?
For 945 Palermo Road. Yes.
Just the one or both?
I have to do them one at a time.
Okay, one. Okay, and I got a second by Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Member Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Diesel?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Passage unanimously. Next?
Do we have to go, we have to go through the cards and everything for 945 Margie?
Okay.
Drive.
That's true. That's true. I'm thinking like we're doing the other thing. Approved the code enforcement lien, reducting 945 Margie Drive. Vice Mayor, you got anything you want to say on that?
Yes, I think that the same process should go forth with that one as well.
Okay, thank you. Got any cards?
Yes, we have the applicant, Tina Russo.
We're good.
And then Stan Johnston.
We're good. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Motion?
So we would move to charge Tina Russo for the cost on 945 Margie Drive and not the fine.
Second.
Same as the last one. Okay, I got a motion from Member Nelson, a second, Member Cole. Roll call vote.
Mayor Diesel?
Yeah, yes.
Vice Mayor Robinson?
Yes.
Member Stokel?
Yes.
Member Cole?
Yes.
Member Nelson?
Passage unanimously. Presented well, thoroughly and completely. Thank you very much. With that, we are moving on to the second round of if you have not done petitions or requests yet, you still have an opportunity. But I, well, I do see a couple of people that haven't done any. See, but you've been at four times on petitions or requests. Okay, maybe not. Thank you, guys. You are, you name an address for the record, please.
I am Nancy Oliver, 2951 Mulberry Drive, Titusville. I'm the vice chair of the North Brevard Coalition of Human Services, which I've been involved with for like 10 years. But I understand that Joe Robinson was instrumental in the beginning of it in the 90s. And you apparently started the 5:30 meeting with my cohorts, but I had another meeting in Cocoa, so you get to hear from me.
Too late.
On behalf of my cohort at the end of this meeting. Same issue. We meet the fourth Wednesday of every month at nine o'clock at the Harry T. Moore Center. And I really encourage you guys to maybe make some time and come. It's only once a month. And we're facing all the issues that the city is facing. That's what we deal with. What I'm really here to ask you, though, is to be proactive and to champion the CAR4 project that is off of Harrison, but with the access off of DeMarit, which makes it more tricky if we could get access off of Barna. It's really off of Barna, but near Harrison. And if the access would come off of Barna, I think we could alleviate some of the complaints going on from people in Royal Oak. But in any event, it's not really an issue you can do much about, because it's apparently already zoned for multifamily dwellings. But because of the access and because not in my backyard, we have people who don't want that project anywhere near them. I would encourage you to go tour the CAR4 project in Melbourne if you haven't seen it, because they have a project in Melbourne that I went to go tour, and I was quite impressed. It's very well-run. They actually have, Brevard Health Alliance has a office right in their building so that people can go and see their medical people without having to get in a car or on a bus or anywhere else. It's very clean. It's amazing. And they didn't clean this up for me, because we made our appointment like the day of and went. Everything's painted, everything's, the floors are shiny. It's gorgeous. And this is low-income housing that is really well-cared for. I know that you've had probably heard enough about Live Locally, and I can't give you any more information than you already have. But there are people in Titusville who would very much benefit by this, and the whole community would, because when people aren't homeless on the streets and have nowhere to go, it's a benefit to the whole community. It's better for me to be able to take my grandson to a park and not have to worry about who's sleeping on a picnic table or hanging around the bathroom if they have a place to live. So I think it's needed for our community. It's already zoned for it, and I wish you would champion it and help me with through. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else on petition or request that has not spoken on a petition or request? Tony, you sure you hadn't been up here yet? No, you'll tell me later. I know you will. Okay. Oh, I guess we go to reports, right? I'm going to say my, a little part of my first. I have a council report, something I've been meaning to do for a long time, and I just haven't done it. When I first got on council in 16, Dre Field was no longer Dre Field. It was Dre Park. And I wanted it to be known that there was football played down there and staff, and did a great job of coming up with a way to do that. So when people walk that park now, they realize how much history is there as far as the athletic world. NFL players played there, state championships were played on that field, and it was important to a lot of people. Similarly, I was over at Sandpoint Park the other day and realized that I, for one, was a Little League coach and board of director member there for 15 years. And Titusville Little League was the first Little League in our city. It was the only Little League in our city for a long time, and it was the only Little League ever that was called Titusville Little League. And, you know, if you don't know the field or anything that, you know, when you first get there and head towards pavilions, you're heading towards Field One. Field One, the outfield, went towards the pavilion. If you get a homerun there, you're doing great, because that river would blow it back at you. Field Two is right there where the pond is actually, right where the baffle box, just keep going that way. And then the Little T-Ball Field was further down where the playground is. Point I'm making is, and I'm sure, like you did kind of with the, like the staff did with the Dre Field, I am sure there are aerial views that could show the fields. I've seen them. I mean, so I guess what I'm saying is, I just, at this point, want to introduce the possibility of, again, having, you know, one of those little placards in the ground there, the former home of Titusville Little League from, gosh, probably from 1950 something to, when did we go down? 2,000 something. Anyway, it just hit me that I'd like to get that thought about. I don't know that I need to do any vote at this time, do you think, or just introduce it?
So, Mayor, I think what we ought to do is go ahead and bring an agenda item back to you at your request, if council approves that. And staff heard what you said. We would bring back some recommendations on the location of where to put the sign, what the sign would look like.
Just a sentimental thing.
Similar to what we did at Dre Park.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, as you say that, I think that's exactly how you did it. You brought it back and said this is, did some research and did a great job. So I guess at this point, we're looking to give you guys that recommendation. Do we need a vote for that? Can somebody make a motion? I don't know.
Some moved.
All those in favor, say yes. Opposed. Okay, I look forward to seeing what that could look like. Thank you. And that's really all I have. So y'all have to be short.
Stan wants to speak on that item.
Say again?
Stan wants to speak on that item, because you voted.
Yes.
Stan doesn't want to speak. He just wants to say yes. I heard him say yes. Stan, you crack me up. Herman? Okay, next? No, 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 I missed it. Let him go.
No, you can go. No, we had the...
Oh, we had the, I think all of us were there at the Harry T., Harry and Harry T. Moore 20th year anniversary on Sunday, which was, I mean, Saturday, which was well-attended.
Very well-attended.
It was a, it was a good forum that they had there.
Jo Lynn had a good seat.
Jo Lynn was on the front row.
I was on time, guys. Not very optimal.
I had, I had one person, one person to come in that looked like they were about my age. And rather than getting a chair, they just, shut up. Rather than getting a chair, he decided to sit on the floor. And I said, you know, it's easier to get down than it is to get up. And when somebody gave him a chair, he couldn't get up. And here I am, the blind leading the blind. I'm helping him up, you know, so. But it was well-attended, and it was, the forum was excellent.
Yeah.
So, yeah. And you never got a seat, did you?
Well, I did, but it was outside the door.
Yeah.
And I'd said then, and it's something to think about, talked to Jeff Davis about it a little bit. They'd do well to have a TV out there with some speakers.
I don't think they, I don't think they expected that kind of turnout.
It's not a very big room, yeah.
Yeah.
But it was very nice. I think bringing that up.
It was. It was.
Member Nelson?
Okay, I promised my neighbors that I would bring this up to the city manager. Some will bring it up now. That sandbar that is behind the old bridge, there are lots of complaints about it. I understand from Mr. Larisse that has been there for years.
This time of year.
This time of year.
That's 2007 photo.
2007. So I think it's probably, it depends on the water level as to how much of that sandbar is covered or not covered. So I think at this point, we have to leave it alone.
Yes, ma'am. As you saw at the Earth Day event, you can see where the water levels are at generally. And this time of the year, April is the end of our dry season, and the water levels are down quite a bit. That area on the west side of the bridge itself, the walkway, is about 18 inches deep. That's it. So when the water levels drop, sandbars are going to appear. And as demonstrated, there's a couple of pictures in April of a couple of different years, and that sandbar's been there.
One of the picture, I think it was 2007.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
And I hate to do this, but he reminded me, and I got to get their names out there. I went to five events on Saturday, which is why I was late. That's what made me think of that. The first one was, it needs to be mentioned, was the YMCA Healthy Kids Event.
Yeah.
That place was packed, full of energy, excitement, positivity. It was amazing. And there's a lot of people, you know, thankful just to be there. Followed that with a trip to the BPS Rising Kindergarteners Welcome out at Marina Park. Followed that with Ace Hardware, I get the year wrong, but I think it was like 30th anniversary. That parking lot was packed with excitement and enthusiasm and people pulling stuff out of there. Of course, there's a lot of raffles, so that was exciting. And then I went to the Harry T. Moore event. And then I went to St. Mark's Episcopal Academy Gala fundraiser down there, where I acted as the principal for a short time. So it was a very full but very exciting day, but that YMCA thing and Harry T. Moore thing, the Ace thing, just an exciting day in our city.
Amen?
Well, go ahead. Sir, Vice Mayor?
I've been resting, but I want to publicly say that I want to thank the citizens and the staff and coworkers of the city of Titusville as being there for me and my family in a time of loss. And I hear a lot of arguments about the attitude, and people don't care about Titusville. I'm publicly saying that they, they do care. And I thank the city and the citizens thereof for being there for me and my family.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Can I say, your grandson did something wonderful. He brought a community together.
Thank you.
Member Stokel?
I had a couple items, hopefully they were kind of quick. One is in regard to the email that city manager sent us about the Brookshire and the pool. If you read that email, that was my question. You guys could probably know when I have a question. But that was in regard to just an informal conversation and somebody mentioning, kind of in passing, oh, I tried to do a pool there, couldn't, didn't really know why. And so that made me inquire, talked to city manager, talked to Brad. And so moving forward, because I think there could be some confusion in development within the area of critical concern, is I would like to try to see if we can do advisability to staff that if that is the case, or there is an impervious requirement, that the developer will have to make sure to notify. There's some type of notification for people that are purchasing, just because I want to make sure we're protecting the citizens that, oh, I'm so excited. I'm going to be buying a home in here, thinking I can do something. And then the developer didn't, like, disclose that, hey, we built this out, we cannot, we're already meeting requirements for impervious pavement. You can't do that. So I'm requesting if we could direct staff with advisability to look into how we could potentially do that.
Can't disagree with that.
That is my motion. I don't, yes.
Second.
That's my motion. Yes, that's my motion, advisability with that.
The advisability from staff and Member Cole made the second.
He's happy as all get it.
Say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Stan, you good?
Yes.
My second one is, and this was brought up earlier, and it has been on my mind. When we first were on council back in, for those that were on in 2016, we did used to publish our agenda packets online, and I really truthfully appreciated that. It was helpful to me. It was helpful to direct citizens, too. During that time, though, shortly after, there was a bunch of lawsuits going on around the state. And so we did pull ours down because we did not want to be sued or have to pay somebody that's trying to sue us essentially. And I do think that was the right thing to do. That being said, I would like to try to put them back online now for transparency purposes. And then if it becomes an issue again, we could look back at taking them down. But I would like to try to increase our transparency, and that, I think we were in favor of that to begin with, aside from these lawsuits that were happening.
Do we have to have an advisability? Because I would agree with that as well. I know we had a reason that that happened, but it happened.
It was ADA.
But I just don't understand why we can't just have people pull it up.
Yeah.
It just makes it easy.
I think there was an ADA requirement.
ADA, that's what it was.
And that was the problem.
That's what it was.
Because some of the stuff...
Somebody was running around the state suing the cities.
Yep.
Saying, I can't read your map. I can't, yes, and it made it very difficult.
I think we take another shot at it.
Yeah, that would be my request.
Second.
Thank you.
All in favor, say yes? Sure.
Kristen Lorti, Cocoa, thank you, Member Stokel, for putting that forward. So I'm fully in support of it. Even if, I mean, for initially, if the city just uploaded the board packet, that's a huge thing. Now, I don't know if your motion is including doing something like the Legistar system that's used in both the county and Cocoa, where you can actually look up agenda items, you have the links to the meetings. You, I mean, it's really helpful to have that. So, I mean, just having the packet, I mean, talk of Titusville is one who's uploading, and you guys aren't. So I'm fully in support of that. But if you could do the, that we're really looking for having a more modern system. And with the ADA thing, I mean, everyone, others are doing it in Brevard, so why not you guys? So I'm not clear on whether your motion is just to upload the packet or to do a real system, you know, where people have access.
I think at this point, we're just trying to get the packet back, first.
So that's all you're doing.
Secondly, well, I don't say that we're done, but kind of like when we went to one meeting, didn't mean we were done. We might get more. But the point I'm making is, I'm not real familiar with that stuff, and I want to get familiar with it. I don't know what the IT people will tell us, but it sounds pretty cool.
I'll meet with you anytime. Cocoa has one of the best, for all the concerns I have with Cocoa, they have one of the best ways. They have the most transparent, and then there's hyperlinks. The county and Cocoa do it very similar. Cocoa just is a little more thorough.
I definitely would want to see more of that.
And I'd be happy to spend any time with you at all to show you.
I, here, let's move forward, get it back.
Great, so I'm in support.
Thank you.
I do have a question. Are you including the agenda package, including the boards?
Are you including the agenda package, including the boards being online or just our agenda just being online?
Yeah, I'm okay with either, to be honest, as much transparency as we can have. And I think we were that and we were moving in that direction until, again, people come and start ruining it. Um, and so I would just like to give people information and so, yeah, so if we can.
Okay.
Yeah.
I agree. Uh, and again, obviously, uh, make, there's a, there's a happy middle in there somewhere where we don't want to suddenly throw a bunch of stuff at staff. But I don't know that's going to be that hard to do, is it?
No, I, I don't, I don't think it was before when we had it, it was scanning them in.
The, the problem we had with, um, the ADA compliance, it wasn't the text stuff, we did okay with that. It's all the graphics and all the pictures, the charts and all that. We, uh, tried to get in line behind other companies to try to help us with our ADA compliance and then COVID hit, so.
Yep.
I, I, I hope it rolls right back up.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we need a vote.
Oh, yeah, we started to do.
No, we did motion, second, and then, yeah, so we did. Yep, to get the agenda packets online.
Yeah, but let's do it again because then we pulled the card up, kind of a card.
Yeah.
All right, so I had the motion from.
Me.
Stokel, Sarah, member Stokel. And I had the second from member Nelson, all those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Passage unanimously.
Okay, and my last item, this is not a request, just informational purposes. Uh, part of my board position with Florida League of Cities being on the executive board, uh, they invited the smaller group of us to attend a municipal conference in Mississippi later this week, um, so I'll be leaving for that for tomorrow. And I was already looking at the agenda packet for that. One of the items is what leaders should know about PFAS. So I'm actually really excited about this. It will be multiple states in the southern region, so, um, I will let you guys know what I learned at the conference.
Some of the companies have already settled.
Then you're going to come back here and, and brief us on it, right?
You already know, you already know.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, city manager?
Yes, sir, as, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, you recall, I added an action item.
That's correct, that's.
Um, and we received a note from the Space Coast, um, Transportation Planning Office that they are requesting letters of support for this, uh, federal INFRA grant for the Ellis Road widening project. Uh, they're seeking letters of support from all the cities in the county as well as the county. So, um, what I'm recommending to city council is that you approve staff to draft and have the mayor sign a letter of support requested by the Space Coast Transportation Planning Organization for the INFRA grant request for the Ellis Road widening project.
Uh, I guess what we need to do first, anybody want to speak on the Ellis Road widening out there? I see none.
I have a couple of cards on city manager's report, so I'm not sure.
Who is, who's got a card?
But I don't think you have any action items on that.
No, this is, this is the only action item I have.
So do you want to speak on this item?
So why can't I speak on the other items in the city manager report? I don't know what the other items are.
I don't know.
What's the other item? He's got a list of the milestones, quarter, quarter to accomplishments and milestones. He submitted this in the report and I would like to speak on it, it's a quarterly thing.
If it's not an action item that we're voting on, you would talk about that during the petitions and requests, so it's only action items.
So back to your, your deal here, do we vote on the letter? I mean, not vote, but do we have a call card on the letter?
Yes, sir.
I thought we would. Anybody want to speak on the letter?
Is it just Stan is the only one that wants to speak on this item?
Well, I want to speak on other seats.
Okay, so Stan Johnston? You want to speak on the letter, correct? Stan?
Uh, I'm here, I have a card for that.
Yes.
The Ellis, Ellis Road.
Letter of support from us to.
To who?
To Space Coast Planning.
Yeah, Space Coast.
Transportation Planning Organization.
You want to, you want to go and talk on Ellis Road? What you know about Ellis Road?
I'm okay with it.
Me either?
Yes.
I'm the secretary of the board, what it's based.
Okay, all right, he's the secretary.
Space Coast Planning Organization and, uh, uh, if you ever been to Melbourne and, uh, traveled Ellis Road, you'll know why they need.
Okay, well, you said that because I'm not familiar with Ellis Road.
Yeah, uh, it is, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, if you, the new exit coming off of ninety-five between, uh, one ninety, uh, one ninety-two? One ninety-two and, uh, O'Gale.
Yeah.
And, uh, it's that new exit and it's beautiful coming off, but the minute you get on the east side of that, uh, new bridge, you run into, uh, Ellis Road. And it's a two lane and it seems like it's been two lanes since nineteen fifty-two. And, uh, but, uh, it has been a lot of effort, it's going to cost a lot of, uh, dollars to get it, uh, get it widened.
We are just in support.
And we need, uh, for the county, it will benefit the county as a whole, uh, if that, uh, uh, we give them this, uh, if it's done, then we support them for it.
All right, so we, uh, have a motion on that?
That's my motion.
Okay, we got, there you go, as it should be. Okay, motion by vice mayor, second by member Nelson, all those in favor of Ellis Road support, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? Pass.
I've got, uh, three information items as well as the special meetings that are coming up. You approved tonight the student awards ceremony resolution and that's, uh, April twenty-ninth at six PM at the, uh, high school auditorium. Uh, the community strategic plan review is the thirtieth of April at five PM here in city council. And we're already doing planning for the red, white and boom ceremony. Um, I'd like to thank, uh, council who participated in the Denny's Community Event, uh, the Community Meals Event, apologize, where Denny's, he was a sponsor of the Tour de Force Bicycle Ride, uh, opened up and served over eight hundred meals at the Grove Church. And mayor and a couple of council members showed up and, uh, it was very, uh, well received, I think, by the community. And then the next day, um, supporting the Tour de Force send-off at Denny's Restaurant again, and then coming to city hall and watching them pass was quite the experience. So I appreciate, uh, council's support of that. Subject to questions?
Thank you, uh, I see no questions, city attorney? Stan? No, just kidding. I'm, I'm, I'm messy, you good? All right, uh, meeting adjourned.